Welcome to the June 24th, 25th City Council Meeting, 6:30 PM, City Council Chamber. We start with the prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May it be grateful this day that we're going to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city, make it a better place to live and work. Amen. The joiners looting the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, limited and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Gitchia.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Yeah.
Counselor Noon, Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Ten present.
Move to silence this evening? No. Moving on to mayor's business, Section 2, 2.1, communications from remote Zoom participation and motion to accept the place found filed by Counsel Janess, seconded by Counsel Mercier. Motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, minutes of the city council regular meeting, June 10th, senior citizens subcommittee, June 12th, for acceptance by Counsel Gitchia, seconded by Counsel Robinson, also fair say I, opposed motion passes. Not being seven o'clock yet, we'll go on to Section 6, City Council motions, 6.1, Counsel Janess, request city manager have the proper department investigate the feasibility of traffic calming solutions on Mill 6 and Appleton Streets between the former overpass and the Central Gorham Streets to reduce excessive vehicular speed on these roads, seconded by Counsel Gitchia, Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in response to some constituent concerns in the area. Both roads have kind of turned into raceways between the former overpass and Gorham/Central Street, depending on which street you're going down. And I know we've done a lot with traffic calming in other areas of the city. I also understand that these are important thoroughfares for our fire department and other emergency response. So I don't know how much there is we can do, but at the very least, if we could step up enforcement in this area to try and rein in some of the speed, and then if there are more permanent physical changes we can make to the roadways, I know that people would be appreciative of it, whether it's bump outs at the intersections to make crossing on foot easier, or any of the other options that we've had on the table around the city. I would appreciate if we could put that on the list to take a look at and see what we can do. Thank you.
All affairs say aye, opposed motion passes, 6.2, Counsel Gitchia, request city manager provide the city council with all emergency maintenance repairs and the water department. That funding was charged to water loan orders, the amount charged, the location of the water main repair, the size of the water main, and the date of the repair, seconded by Counsel Robinson, Counsel Gitchia.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Just the other day, there was a main break on Thorndike Street, and the city's water department was called, and contractors did the work while they were there. So I'm just looking for this report because I still don't think operational funds should go to loan orders, and I'd like to see, over the past few years, what type of funding actually was spent out of a loan order for water main breaks, emergency water main breaks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All affairs say aye, opposed motion passes, 6.3, Counsel Belanger, request city manager have proper department address traffic calming on Butnam Road, seconded by Counsel Chow, Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I've been notified by constituents on Butnam Road that there's been some excessive speeding that's taking place on that road and has been going on for some time. There, if you were to frequent it, you'd see many residents have little green men on their driveways with those slow flags indicating, "Slow down." And it's not doing the trick. So I'd like it to be considered for traffic calming measures, and in particular, Butnam Road was paved approximately four years ago. It's in very, very good condition, and perhaps at the end of the paving season, we could see what's left and perhaps install permanent speed humps. That would be sufficient to enable it. I know it'd be well received, so I would ask that of the administration to have this location considered for permanent speed humps at the end of the paving season. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
All affairs say aye, opposed motion passes, 6.4, Counselors Chow and Robinson, request city manager have the appropriate department evaluate and report on the feasibility and safety impacts of installing a four-way stop sign at the intersection of West 6th Street and Bunker Hill Avenue, no second needed. Gentlemen.
I guess I can go first. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion is straightforward. It's brought up to me by a few residents in that district, actually, because I know them. Both of these streets, the drivers drive pretty fast, and often somebody might miss a stop sign there on one street that has a stop sign, especially when they have vehicles parked on the street. They can't see, they drive too fast on these roads. Many accidents in that road, so I would just ask the city manager to work with the appropriate department to study the area, to see if a four-way stop sign would be helpful to reduce the number of accidents, and I believe the district counselor, Counsel Robinson, probably more aware of the area. You know, just any type of traffic, you know, mitigation to promote public safety that'd be helpful to the residents and anyone who's driving in that area. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Chow, for that. And absolutely, this area, I've brought it forward before, I know this is one of the sections that's going to be going through the CSO separation process there, and so maybe something permanent, but until then, I would also highly encourage if we can get a four-way stop there until we could do a permanent installation. Thank you.
All affairs say aye, opposed motion passes, 6.5, Counsel Robinson, request city manager have the law department provide an update on the anticipated timeline for the construction employment contract draft, seconded by Counsel Gitchia, Counsel Robinson.
Motion speaks for itself.
All affairs say aye, opposed motion passes, 6.6, Counsel Robinson, request city manager provide an update, updated street sweeping schedule, seconded by Counsel Scott, Counsel Robinson.
Motion speaks for itself.
All affairs say aye, opposed motion passes, 6.7, Counsel Robinson, request city manager work at the proper department to identify and address overgrowth problem areas, seconded by Counsel Mercier, Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Quite a few residents have been reaching out. It's that time of year, you know, the sun finally came out after all this rain, and there's quite a few blind spots, I know, throughout, not just my district, I'm sure, citywide, so I think it's a good time. I know other communities, if we're too busy, or we're too understaffed, other communities will even look at bringing in contractors just to cut back corners, so anything we could do to try to get that abey, gratefully appreciated. Thank you.
Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Specifically, I'd like to add to this, the Hamilton Canal District, there's a lot of overgrowth that's happening next to the roads. It's getting tough for people to see, walking or driving. We've had this problem in previous years, you know, it's just not an overly used area of the city yet, so it's, it kind of goes by the wayside and things pop up quickly. So thanks to my colleague for bringing this forward, and I appreciate the efforts by the administration to address this.
Counsel Gitchia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's manager Golden. Could you have someone also go over to stockholders of school? All out back is overgrown where the kids are playing the basketball and everything over there. Thank you.
All affairs say aye, opposed motion passes, next two motions are mine, 6.8, request city manager have law police department establish a do not knock registry, seconded by Counsel Yem. And just quickly, I know in some of the neighborhoods, solicitation season has begun, and I've heard a lot of complaints, people just rapid on doors and not leaving, so talking to the police chief, other cities and towns do have a do not knock registries where they come in for a permit to solicitate, they'll see the addresses that they cannot go to, so. Counsel Gitchia, go ahead.
So does that mean politicians can't knock on doors anymore?
I was thinking more of like, when you repair roofers. Counsel Belanger.
We can make ourselves exempt, counseling. Mayor Rourke, excellent motion. This is one thing I've noticed canvassing in the district and hearing from constituents that these door-to-door salesmen, if you will, selling solar, replacement windows, roofing, you name it, they're out there. Some are aggressive and some not, but they've become a bit of a hindrance, so the timing of this is perfect, so I anxiously support this motion, and hopefully we can get that registry going sooner than later. Thank you very much.
All affairs say aye, opposed motion passes, now next one's by myself, request city council look at possible amendments to the code of ordinances in regard to liquor licenses that refer to the water department for report and recommendation, seconded by Counsel Mercier. Motion speaks for itself. I know we've been going through this recently with a couple of different places, and hopefully we can tighten it up to make it manageable for everybody involved. Counsel Robinson, Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this motion. I also have experienced this. I know something that's big in the city as of late is brunches, and I think there's some outdated language that governs when establishments can serve alcohol. I don't know, I know there was a timeframe that was accepted from the state at some point that allowed it on a Sunday, but, I mean, I know a lot of businesses are doing well with brunches on Sundays, so any kind of adjustments would greatly be appreciated. Thank you.
Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city solicitor. I believe it went through the State House last week that the number of liquor licenses for retail package stores, they were leaving up to the municipalities on whether to increase them or not, because I know right now Lowell's at maximum for those licenses, so if you could just get us a ruling on that, and so we can, I can make a motion to increase it. I got a call from a couple of constituents that want to open up a package store, so thank you.
All affairs say aye, opposed motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules and take item 8.2 out of order. We have this rate here.
Seconded by Counsel Gitchia, take 8.2 out of order. 8.2 is a vote to approve and submit letter to U.S. Economic Development Administration.
Good evening. Jennifer Rayd, I'm the executive director of NIMCOG, and I'm here tonight requesting a letter of support for our Economic Development District designation application, which goes to the U.S. Economic Development Administration, and I'm glad to answer any questions. But I've provided to you a lot of information about the process. Glad to answer questions.
Any questions? Motion to adopt by Counsel Gitchia, seconded by Counsel Janess. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon, Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Ten years.
Mr. Mayor, while we're under suspension, I'd like to allow Norma von Fricken's request to speak, to be, to come in. The reason I say that is because she had, at three times, we left it to the very end so long that she had to leave, and I'm not going to do that again, so if we could, under suspension, allow her to speak on her.
Motion by Counsel Mercier, take 11.2 out of order, seconded by Counsel Yem, all affairs say aye, opposed motion passes, Section 11, 11.2 miscellaneous, Norma von Fricken, request permission to address city council regarding 911 call center.
Hi, I'm Norma von Fricken, 57 Dover Street. I'm here tonight to talk about the emergency response center, 911, in particular, behavior health. I'm not a professional, nor do I hold a degree in anything, but I've had plenty experience with DMH, excuse me, the Department of Mental Health, and done plenty of research over the years. To begin, we know the medical industry today is big business. It's one of our leading industries, as you know, and it garnered an enormous amount of clout, especially during COVID. It's a business like any other, and it's beholding to stockholders. It's also another case of neo-capitalism, exploitation of anything and everything, human or non-human, in this case, our mental health and the human condition. Here's what I surmise. I don't believe there are as many mental health emergencies as we are to believe, but we hired clinicians who go out on calls with the police in circumstances when there appears to be a mental health issue or behavior issue, if I'm not mistaken. It is also safe to say, our society in general is pill crazy. The facts are in, in this case, often misdiagnosed as well. I'm not against pills. They saved my life, and many so-called emotional or mental health problems are more likely to be normal behavior, personality traits, circumstantial and situational, to which we can now add the impact of climate. And take ADHD or hyperactivity, for example. Most of these kids are simply rambunctious, a lot of suppressed energy, not enough physical outlets like there used to be. Add to that, today, if we're upset, or angry, or had a rotten day, and we yell and scream, we're out of control. We have an attitude problem. In this modern world in which we live in today, such as it is, safe to say, we are stereotyped, labeled, studied, and more and more like robots. Back to clinicians, I believe clinicians on calls often tend to overreact. It's their business to find a problem. Take depression, for example. People will often say they're depressed when in fact, it's sadness, again, i.e. situational. Additionally, and perhaps more importantly, most often, clinicians don't know enough about a person to make any kind of a judgment. And what is mental illness, instability? What is normal behavior? What isn't? It's open-ended, lot of variables. We all have our moments. Further, much of the psych analysis is pure guesswork based on studies, and studies, too, are not an accurate measure and controversial. Today, a lot of people are lonely. We know this.
Ms. von Fricken, can I wrap it up? We're all out of time.
I got like three paragraphs.
Okay, thank you.
Except for big cities, nobody's around anymore. Everybody's on phones or work, less in person, too much bad news in your face, enough to depress anybody. Here's my opinion. With exception to the vile and sleazy slime buckets in this world, what people need today is more kindness, compassion, laughter, faith, hope, and God, not pills, or even counseling. But when we need it the most, religion too is relegated to the sidelines. People, when we get to the bottom of it, it's our society that's sick. Internet and social media overload, guns, mass shootings, drugs everywhere, these are the wars that we need to fight. In summary, since our firemen and our police have training in CPR and first aid, and since their business is to save lives and protect us from the evils and snares of this world, we can assume they are passionate and caring individuals. So I would venture to more than guess, they can do the job any clinician can do and save people from unnecessary anguish, and the city a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Motion to accept the place found filed by Counsel Mercier, seconded by Counsel Scott, all affairs say aye, opposed motion passes. Motion by Counsel Gitchia, take 8.5 out of order, seconded by Counsel Dakota, all affairs say aye, opposed motion passes. A vote to authorize the city manager to file a special legislation, motion to approve by Counsel Gitchia, seconded by Counsel Janess. Any comments? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon, Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Last thing, under suspension by Counsel Belanger, seconded by Counsel Chow, to take 7.2 out of order, all affairs say aye, opposed motion passes, 7.2, official report, Lowell High School update. Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Councilors, I'd like to turn your attention to Mr. Dowd. We do have a presentation. I know that SCANSCA and the remaining organizations will be here, Suffolk as well as Perkins Eastman, so we have a... Mr. Dowd.
Good evening. Mayor Rourke, councilors, I'd like to introduce the project team. We've got Kevin Kane, Bob Bell with the architect, Justin Lyons, the contractor, and Robin Greenberg with the architect, also, and Sean Edwards. We're here in April, on the April 8th council meeting, and we presented that the schedule needed to be extended for the project one year. Tonight, we will review the schedule and the extension. We're going to explain the additional costs, and we'll also go thoroughly through those additional costs. Sorry, we're just waiting for the presentation. Yep, down. One more, Chris, down. Mouse.
Counsel Janess says off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. We will be, sorry about that, we will be presenting an increased budget. One thing I want to state about this budget is, it's a budget for the, increased budget for the remainder of the project. This is not realized costs. We're going to work very diligently to minimize that the minimum amount of money out of this increased budget is utilized, and we will get into details. We'll start with the schedule, Mr. Lyons.
Thank you. So what we're trying to illustrate here is that a summary... At a summary level, right now, we're presently in phase three, and the east side of the campus is extending into the winter of '25, '26, with that turnover after the winter break in '26. The start of phase four effectively cannot start until the east side is turned over through that winter break, so phase four starts in January of 2026, effectively causing a six-month delay on the start. And then, from that point on, it's about an 18-month schedule for phase four, and, you know, through the, through the rebase line schedule with numerous, you know, time impact analysis, we've actually, we have a, at a summary level, a baseline schedule of 18 months, bringing us to June 1 of 2027. That's the realization of a, of that 12-month extension that we're going to further go into detail as these slides continue. And we don't want to spend a lot of time on, on these, I think everyone's aware of the phasing plans, but, you know, briefly, phase three, east side of campus, which is east of the canal, can be seen here in the maroon color with that renovation of the 1922 area depicted as phase three. And then going to phase four, when this is turned over over the winter break, phase four starts in January of '26, and then is turned over during that summer period of And then just at the conclusion of the project, the, between the summer and fall of 2027, is when the entire phase one through four is completed.
Just want to touch upon briefly, the original costs that were presented from the city manager's office to the city council two weeks ago was $47 million. This is a breakdown of where that number comes from. I know everyone's aware, the project team has worked diligently at reviewing those costs and coming forward with, with a number that we believe is the proper budget going for. Those are subsequent, that $47 million number subsequently reduced to 39.8. Those were unvetted costs, that was rough information that we had had at the time, so we could, the manager could keep you informed. A quick breakdown of how the $39.8 million breaks out is, I know everybody keeps hearing about the basement slab, and I've heard, oh, how's it a $40 million basement slab? It's not, the money is not primarily in the slab, as you can see here. The actual slab in phase three and phase four in the 1922 building, we have it costing $1.75 million. Phase three slab, the work has already been performed, the change orders have already been written for that. That cost $975,000. The phase four slab is currently in design. The architects have some ideas at cost-saving measures, so that has not been priced yet because they're still putting the design together, waiting on some coordination of mechanicals. The scheduled extension and other costs is primarily where the, where the money is. We will further break that down in further slides. That's $25.1 million, and... And contingency replenishment, we're going to... The current contingency is what I have presented in previous council meetings to the SBC. That number of $21.2 million, we have spent $16 million to date, only have $5 million left, and we have approximately $6 million in known changes, not including the scheduled extension and other costs in front of us. That is why we're going to run out of contingency around the first of the year, which is why we are looking to have that replenished. If I move on, the additional costs, we are now at the cost for Skanska to be here an additional year, plus costs that are being incurred now in Phase 3, is... That's down $200,000 from when we were at $47 million. The architect is down just over $100,000. The Suffolk's down from 15.5 to 13.1 million, subcontractors. Original cost came in at 8.9. We have that budgeted right now at 5.9. We are still negotiating with the subcontractors. There's a lot of costs that we think in there that are invalid, that we have removed. So that comes out to $20.5 million for that work in place. And again, the construction contingency is a combination of the slab and that 13 million I spoke of. We're saying that proceeding forward, a prudent construction contingency going forward for the remainder of the project is $14.7 million, and I will get into detail in future slides as to how the project team arrived at that number. Moving on, the onus project managers' number, further broken down, base project management services for the additional year. We're also carrying a second shift person. We've realized in order to provide the correct educational environment, there's a lot of noise that was impacting the school. There are a lot of trades that cannot perform their work on the 7 to 3 shift. We know we're going to have to run a 3 to 11 shift in order to maintain the educational environment. And I'll have Bob Bell address the architect's costs.
Sure. Just a quick breakdown, the 2.16 million, as Jim had mentioned, has been reduced $100,000. The 1.88 million is architectural fees and our direct consultants. There are 12 direct consultants, engineers, that would be working. And then we have reimbursable consultants. This includes geo-environmental, geotech, and hazmat. And then lastly, the structural costs at 57.5 thousand is for redesign of the floor slabs.
These next two slides give a further breakdown as far as the construction management fees and as long as... As well as the subcontractor fees. You know, originally submitted about four to six weeks ago, we were at the top portion at that 16.5. And then where we've come in the past four to six weeks, through, you know, intensive discussions with both Perkins Eastman and Skanska, is we've been able to bring that down to just roughly 13.1. The following slide sums up the subcontractor costs submitted originally came in at 9, and right now, we are targeting, you know, bringing that number down to 6, roughly 30%. And until everything is approved, you know, we can... We cannot further that discussion, but this is a reasonable number that we can... We feel we can achieve for the city.
As I spoke of just a moment ago, the construction contingency in the base contract is $21.2 million. Through Change Order 34, we have spent $16 million to date with cost events, PCOS that we have in hand, and we have forecasted, not including the scheduled extension, we're currently reviewing and negotiating approximately $6 million in changes. We run just over $1 million a month in change orders. We believe we will maintain the pace that we're currently on with change orders. That'll have us running out of the construction contingency for change orders at approximately the first of the year. It is for that reason that we're looking to provide additional construction contingency to maintain paying for change orders through the finish of Phase 3 and into Phase 4. We're currently in the 1922 building, where a majority of the changes for Phase 3 are originating from. We have Phase 4 is one-half 1922 building. We reasonably foresee we will encounter the same issues we're encountering there. And then in Phase 4, we go into Coburn Hall, the 1892 building, and it is reasonably foreseeable all the issues we've had in the 1922 building will continue in that building that is 130 years old. In calculating the contingency, we used two methodologies that came out to the $14.75 Putting the contingency together is not an exact science, and I'll explain how the project team came about the $14.75 million. The first approach was using a percentage of contingency use. Our current contingency burn rate in the 1922 building in Phase 3 is 12.5%. We have every belief that that will likely proceed into the southern portion of the 1922 building as well as the 1892 building. We have $93 million remaining that will be spent in those buildings. Twelve and a half percent of that is $11.6 million. So if we maintain the pace of 12.5% of scope remaining, there'll be $11.6 million. We then need additional funds, or may need, I should say, additional funds for closeout of subcontractors, as well as putting a safety factor in so that we don't have to come back. Our intent in the way this is priced is with everything we know and foreseeable costs, this is what we need for the remainder of the project. Again, we don't want to be back here next June saying we had more unforeseen conditions. We're trying to predict all the unforeseen conditions that we can, so this is the last The other methodology which we used was a trade-by-trade analysis of known issues and foreseeable changes for the remainder of the project. The project team, we sat down for three hours, we took all the trades, and we went trade-by-trade and brainstormed on what we thought the issues were going to be and the costs. Put that all together, that spreadsheet came up to $11.35 million, which is, as you can see, is in the neighborhood of the other method of calculating the potential contingency usage. Again, adding a factor in for closeout and safety, a safety factor, we arrived at $14.75 million in contingency. I want to emphasize that contingency, if it doesn't get used, it never goes to the contractor, it stays with the city until a change order is written. Until that money is encumbered with a change order, it stays with the city. I don't believe a bond is written for that money, it's just there in case it needs to be used, and our intent is to use the least amount possible. Moving on, what are our next steps? Next steps would be working with the council to get an additional budget approved for us to move forward. As we stated with the extension, there is insufficient funds at the $381 million to complete the project. We're looking for an additional budget of $39.8 million, which would put the overall project budget to $420 million. Once we get a revised budget amount, we will then proceed to the MSBA. There's a project funding agreement with the MSBA. That document would then be updated with the MSBA. I know there's been a lot of questions about what will the state or what will the MSBA fund. It is at that point when we update the project funding agreement that the amount, if any, increased by the MSBA would be reflected in that document. Currently, the maximum facilities grant, that's what the city gets, maximum amount the city can get from the state is $252 million. If there's more money to come from the state, that number would be increased in that document. We've been working with the city manager, who in turn has been working with Senator Kennedy, Representative Howard, Representative Elliott, and Representative Hong in seeing what assistance can be obtained from either the MSBA or from the state legislature. The other route that we will be going down in coming days is finalizing these costs. And again, we will be doing diligent efforts to reduce the costs, negotiate to the best of our ability for the best value for the city, looking into everything, pushing back. We've already been pushing back, and I can assure you, we all will continue to push back on these costs so that we minimize what portion of that $39.8 million comes to fruition. On a positive note, the 1980s building is going to be turned over in August. Suffolk is nearly complete in the 1980s building. Everything on east campus will be completed and occupied when the students return on August 25th. There's an amazing culinary facility in there. I can say, of all the departments that are going from the worst condition to the best condition, it's probably culinary with the restaurant, which is phenomenal. The other areas in there, we've got labs being completed, there are giant light wells within the center of the 1980s building. It used to be all those classrooms had absolutely no daylight. Every classroom in there is going to have daylight now. And I would believe we'll open it up to questions. Thank you.
Council Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's one hell of a number, $420 million. Now, you said that that would be the final number, Mr. Dowd, correct? What we're looking at? But I look at the timeline.
The nature of renovation, I cannot say that is a final number. We believe to the best of our ability that will be a final number.
You haven't even got to the Coburn Building yet, though. So how do you know, I love the word, unforeseen, going to happen at the Coburn Building?
We don't, counselor.
You don't? So we are at 22.5% increase on this project. And I hate to always be pounding on you, Mr. Dowd, representatives from Perkins Eastman and Skanska, I mean, from Suffolk, have either of your companies done a project that has come out 22% over budget? It amazes me, and it pisses me off, to tell you the truth. Can anybody answer that question to me? In this unforeseen circumstances, really? We had a canal right there next to that 22 Building. Anybody think about checking the slab? No. There's 1.75 million right there. I just hate to see that the taxpayers are going to take this on, because I don't see any other way out of this unless the state does come and help us out. But I got to tell you, and not even, Mr. Dowd, I mean, the Coburn Building hasn't been looked at, so we don't even know what's going to happen there. So you're going to come back to us again, you're going to ask for more money. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Blanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate Mr. Dowd and the representatives being in here this evening. But the news is not good. This body has a serious case of sticker shock, as if we didn't have it already. Now, we knew this was coming. We tore this facility back in mid-February. We seen it with our own eyes. We knew this was coming, but not to this degree. Not to this degree. So if I can go over the summary here of the additional budget, so, Mr. Mayor, through you to Mr. Dowd. Mr. Dowd, so the concrete slab, the construction material, we're only looking at 1.7 million, that correct? Just on the materials for this, right? That's the good news, people. That's the good news. So the scheduled extension for having workers there for an extra year or some odd, $25 million. So that's a million dollars every other week. So wages don't go down, profits don't go down, but our costs, the taxpayers, go up. Now, contingency replacement, you're requesting 13 million. Now, we're entering the final phases of this project. Something tells me if you're asking for that kind of money at this point in the project, you're expecting some sur... Overages. There's no doubt in my mind. You're expecting the worst if you're asking for that kind of money, this late in the game. Not good. $39 million. I don't know where we stand with state funding. There's no guarantees there. So the way I look at this, Mr. Dowd, either you or your surrogate, somebody underbid And my experience with contracts, when somebody underbids, they typically own it. But not in this case, it seems. So how do we swallow this pill? I have no idea. What guarantees can you give going forward that this is going to be enough? I mean, I think Council Dakota just addressed that. You basically can't, correct?
That is correct. With everything we know now and what we're foreseeing, what we've encountered in the 1922 building, we're using the same percentages, we're putting that at the same percentage dollar value of what we will encounter within the 1892 and the remainder of the 1922 building. Unfortunately, the nature of renovating these old buildings is you end up with these unforeseen costs, and unfortunately, that is coming through to fruition in a major league way.
It sure is. It sure is. And that's due to... Someone's due diligence not being done properly here, Jim. Now, the underlying issue here to me is that this is the most probable location. If you're going to have overcharges and overages, this is where it's going to be, in the basement of the 22 Building. A colonoscopy should have been conducted in this location, time and time, not one hole, several holes, to perhaps catch something like this. Perhaps it could have been avoided. I don't know. But here we are. So I don't think the taxpayer should own this. I really don't. Some of this onus is on you and your surrogates as well for not finding this. And again, the most probable, likely location where this is going to occur. So I don't know where to go. I want to hear from my colleagues. I'd like to hear what the manager has to say afterwards. Where do we go from here besides the taxpayers? Because that's a tidy sum of money in a poor city like Lowell that we're going to have to go to. So I'm going to listen, Mr. Mayor, and I may have further comments. Thank you very much.
Council Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Perhaps the cost could have been avoided. And I hate... And I'm just thinking out loud, I'm not addressing anybody, I'm just thinking out loud to when we had to choose between a high school, brand new, at Colley Stadium, and one downtown with a building, rather, two, that you knew. I mean, I'm not a builder, I don't know the first thing about it, but common sense and logic would tell you that you're going to find a lot of problems, and that you're going to come back one day, as I see you here today. And it's not surprising to me, and I don't want to gloat, but I believe I was right because our children would have had a brand-new high school right in the midst of the stadium where they play, and that would have been beautiful. I think the school would have been built by now. I don't think they would be coming forward saying, "We need more money, 40 million more." I'm not surprised, but it just recertifies the thoughts that I had all them years ago, and I can't say that the people were wrong, because I think they weren't. We wouldn't have encountered all these overruns from buildings that were so old that was built near Canal. built near canals that you know that something's going to happen. I hate to gloat, and I'm sorry for the, and I admire you for coming forward with the courage that you have with a straight face to ask us for 40 million dollars more. It's just amazing. So I admire your courage, but I, I had to say this, because this is what I'm thinking. Gee, if only they would have went the way that we felt where it should have been in the first place. Thank you for letting me think out loud.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My colleagues have all said it so elegantly already, but I did have a question about the assumption that you're making around the 1892 Building. So are you saying you're using just the same burn rate that we've already been using through the 1922 Building? Or have additional, like soil testing, like borings been done at this point in time? Have we done any actual additional tests in the 1892?
There were additional soil tests done in the 1892 Building over the February, February and April breaks.
And we have results from that? I mean, are we in the same situation that we've been in with the 1922?
So the slab testing that was done this year found that it was inconsistent, that we did have spots where the soil had subsided and others that didn't. So we are planning to, you know, work with the information on the slab design, but it demonstrates that it's not a consistent result.
So it's going to be a similar situation that we're planning on encountering, and that's why you're using the same rates as right now? Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Getche.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up what Counsel Scott just said, how many borings did we do in the 1892 Building to come up with this conclusion?
There were nine additional borings done in the, in the 1922 Building.
The 1892?
In Phase Four. So it's the combination of the 1922 and 1890s.
Okay. Now, how time changes things. If you go back in time, there was a lot of optimism to this project from the very speakers who are sitting here telling us all this other stuff. It was asked to them many times over, "How confident are you in this?" And the contingency was set based off of the confidence level in it. I don't know why the confidence level is gone now and it's turned the other way. When we're looking at the three phases that we're currently into, why are we not setting the contingency towards the first two phases where it went well, if you did all of the testing and making sure? But now we're going on the worst one and picking the contingency from that if the original overview of the project was in place? So that, that's my question to it. You gave us a contingency back then, based off of it. One phase messes up, but now we're going to determine the last phase based off of the highest one and not the other two that went through. Do you know why we're choosing the highest one to grab, at the 12.5% of contingency that rate you're going at?
Yes.
Could you?
The first, the first phase was a gymnasium, which was new construction. The second phase, which was the addition of the cafeteria and the floors above it, as well as the new freshman academy, is a brand-new five-story building and a renovation of, a portion of the 1980s Building. Phase Two was about 10% renovation and 90% new construction. When you look at the overall contingency that was carried in the project, it was 7%. The industry standard for new construction contingency, for new construction, is 3%. Industry standard for renovation is 5%. Knowing that we were going into these 100 and 130-year-old buildings, the project carried 7% from the start. Currently, in the 1922 Building, in the 1892 Building, we are, in, in the, rather, 1922 Building, we are encountering a burn rate of 12.5%. One half of the 1922 Building is encompassed in Phase Four. The other half is the 1892 Building, which is even older. Knowing what we've encountered, we believe, very much so, that it's prudent to carry 12.5% because otherwise, we're going to be back here, most likely, next June, asking for additional funds, which we, we don't want to do.
So what, what number was the original contingency set at? What was that number?
In the GMP, it was $21.2 million.
Okay, so it was over the 5% at that time?
It was 7%. That's what it was carried at.
Okay. So my question comes down to, when you know these numbers going in, and now we're seeing it flop, this whole project has become a total disaster because of, in my opinion, it was lack of really inspection and things being done to give us appropriate numbers. And we can all call COVID, or we can call whatever we want to this project. COVID is a great excuse in government to overtax people, and, you know, this project has been awful. You've got a second shift going on. What happens to the sports and after-school programs in that school while you do the second shift? Because during the day, you're worried about the kids, but at night, we're going to throw a second shift on, what happens to those students?
Majority of the activities taking place are in the gymnasium. The other ones are in areas of the building that are further away, or you don't have testing and other learning activities going on that are adversely impacted by construction. We work very closely with Mr. Fiatto on what the activities are in, in the building, whether, if they have a special event in the cafeteria, we'll, we'll push, starting second shift to four o'clock. We communicate with Mr. Fiatto and Mr. Smulligan daily to coordinate that, to make, make sure that all the operations of the school are maintained.
Has that been a set piece already? Do they know this is coming already?
Absolutely. This, this phasing, this phasing and everything that was put together of how the project is proceeding, we spent hours with Superintendent Skinner, Mr. Fiatto, and Mr. Smulligan organizing all of this and making sure everything we've done is coordinated with the school department and the high school administration.
So as we build more and more to the contingency, does the owner's, project manager's fee go up, or does it, is it one set fee? And also on the architect end, does their fee actually go up on every dollar that's spent out of the contingency? Or does it remain fixed cost at this point because of the costs that we started at? Are those costs going up as the contingency gets spent more?
No, they do not. They do not go up. They stay flat.
Okay, so then why do we owe you more money? Just timeframe, because it's taken an extra year?
Exactly.
Okay, so, so if a project runs longer, you, is a monetary value that has to go to the architect who designed this in the beginning for us?
To the team, yeah, for extended services beyond the contract. That's, that's the cost.
Okay, so, so basically what I'm highlighting is that every dollar that gets spent outside and timeframe gets longer and longer, the architect, architect and owner's project manager make more and more money?
If it stretches beyond the contract.
I mean, Mr. Mayor, I agree with the previous speakers. The taxpayer can't afford it, and they're already outlining right to this body and the public that they'll be back again. I get where they're just pulling out of their hat and throwing a needle in, in the haystack and hoping that they can find it at the 12.5% in the contingency, but there's no real number. It's just because Phase Three was at this number, we're hoping it gets to this number. There's real no, there's really no number in here when, I don't even know if we can talk about executive session when we talked about this, Mr. Manager. I don't think those minutes have been released, which is a sad point that we're here talking about this, but we can't really talk about, we always said, an executive session, because I think that that has a big point to this discussion, and the residents should hear what this body has to say about that. But at the end of the day, this project has gone upside down by poor management in the end, and their lack of understanding the totality of that project. Whether they believe that or they don't, we were told there were no more asbestos than what they knew at the time, and we got hit with more money there. We were told all these things were pretty much standard and it would work, and we're being told the same story again. It's like buying a car and knowing that you paid too much, and then going back to the same used car salesman and buying that same car again. It's just sad that the residents are going to be on the hook for this, because I'm sure that the state delegation is not going to pull a rabbit out of their hat on this one. This one's going to be a tough one, because we already did 38 million, thanks to, you know, Senator Kennedy. But thank you again.
Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the project team being here tonight to run through this with us. It's unfortunate they have to be. But it is what it is, and we are where we are, and the only way we can go is forward. We can look in the mirror, we can talk about decisions that were made, things that should have been known at the time, unknown knowns, known unknowns, however you want to look at it, site location, whatever, but none of that matters anymore. All that matters is finishing this project, so the kids can get the best learning environment we can possibly give them. Unfortunately, we're looking at a big number here tonight, and I'm, like my colleagues, I'm not convinced that we're not going to be having this discussion again. I do appreciate, Mr. Dowd, you, you setting this up so that you don't have to come back, and I hope you don't have to come back. I think everyone in the city hopes we don't have to have these conversations anymore. But this is not going to be the last building project in this city. Hopefully, we'll be the last one of this size for quite some time. But we have other aging buildings, and we're going to have to do other projects. And so my biggest concern here is that we really take a look at this and learn these lessons now, so we don't have to learn them again in the next project. I think it's extremely important for us to have an open, honest conversation and understand how we got where we are, so we can avoid being in this situation the next time we have one of these building projects. And that's not a discussion for tonight, but I do think it's important, Mr. Manager, that we really lock in on this and really understand what happened, so that we have ideas going forward on how to keep this from happening again with the next, next project, to keep the taxpayers from continuing to get soaked every time we do this kind of project. So, Mr. Manager, I'm asking you to put that in your notes and really come back to us and report to us. Once this project is in the rearview mirror and the doors are open, really tell us what we learned, what mistakes we made as a city, what mistakes our contractors made, and how we can prevent that from happening again. We've done that in the Hamilton Canal District. We looked at the, the land disposition agreement that was created with a previous developer, realized the mistakes that were made with that, and how we can improve it, and how we can build a stronger city and a stronger LDA moving forward. I think we need to do the same exact thing with this project. We need, we need to have an honest retrospective and understand how to not have this happen The biggest thing that I see looking at this, we've all talked about it, the biggest cost that we're looking at tonight is the extension, the timeline, and how that increases the, the cost for this project. So, Mr. Manager, I'd like to ask you, and through you to the project team, have we looked at alternatives? Have we looked at ways where we could possibly keep the same schedule by possibly freeing up more space? Maybe that's obtaining some temporary space somewhere close to the high school that we could use, so that we could, you know, not have to phase the work in the way we originally planned to phase it, possibly bringing that timeframe down, possibly saving some money? I don't know if that's possible. I don't even know if it's something we've looked at. But portable classrooms or leasing other space in the downtown to extend the footprint of the campus during this project, I think is something that might be worth having a discussion about, so that maybe we can save some money. Yeah, we're probably going to end up spending more money to lease that space for whatever we're doing, but maybe we spend less in the construction project, and maybe, when you combine those two numbers, it's a smaller number than what we're looking at tonight. I just think it's, we're at a point, we got to look outside the box. We got to look for options here. We got to look for ways to do, do right by the taxpayers and the kids. So, Mr. Manager, I would ask that we, you know, possibly take a look at that, see if there's any opportunity here. I don't know if there is. Maybe, maybe this is the best solution going forward, but I just wanted to mention that. Lastly, I want to make sure we've taken care of the water intrusion problem that caused this situation in the first place. So, Mr. Dowd, can you, can you confirm for me that we've fixed the water intrusion problem in the 1922 Building as well as Coburn Hall? Or are we going to be having our new construction subject to the same fate as the old construction?
The water intrusion problem is, is currently in design for installing foundation drains. It's with Perkins Eastman right now for 1922 and 1892. It's being designed right now.
Okay. I think that's very important, because I don't want us to have to be repairing this building in five, 10, 15 years, because we let the water come back in. So let's make sure we get that taken care of, just like my colleagues, not happy we're here having this conversation, but the only way out is through. So let's get this done.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions through you to the manager. With this $40 million or whatever it is additional bond, does that impact our rating?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Not necessarily. It wouldn't, we, we have excess levy capacity to deal with this. So anytime you do borrow more money, it would, it would impact or could impact. But in a manner, in a manner like this, we would have to show how we could afford to pay for that. So not a direct.
So yes and no.
Yeah, yes and no.
And so, so as my colleague was talking about, in the future, large-scale projects being done, there might not be any future large-scale projects as a result of this, because we're spreading ourselves very thin with this additional $40 million that was unaccounted for. Another thing that stands out to me is, all of a sudden, we're doing due diligence? Why wasn't this due diligence in the nine holes, boring holes done before we encountered this project on the first part? And, and I'd like to get an answer for that. It seems like now everyone wants to do the due diligence, but why wasn't that performed before we got to this point?
I can address that. The, the conditions with the slab, there were no signs of any erosion whatsoever. Usually what you would see is some settling, you'd see some cracking of slabs of walls, you'd see racking of windows or doors. There's absolutely none of that. When we did the cores, the cores were for the purpose of understanding what the slab composition was, and even those few cores did not reveal that there was an underslab issue. Additionally, when we did some foundation work for the elevators, none of this was seen or found. So it's not something, it's something that we would say is truly unforeseen. There were no indications that this was occurring.
Thank you for that answer. What I heard from that answer, though, unfortunately, is, so you went partially off of visual inspection with no settling or cracking, and you did a couple boring holes to test, and, and that was sufficient, in your opinion?
We rely on our engineers, as well as structural engineers, and it's a combination of visual and whatever documents that they can find, and...
Well, I'm asking, my question to you was, you said you performed nine boring holes for Phase Four already in anticipation of problems?
Yes.
How many boring holes were performed before that phase?
11.
How many?
11.
11. And, and all of that was based off of visual inspection for the most part? And, and because you didn't see any of the things you listed, then you felt it would suffice to move forward?
It was a combination of visual inspection, available documents, and research that we have, engineers' evaluations of what they can see, some limited destructive testing to see what things are made out of, whether it's overhead or in the wall. So it's a combination of those things.
And, and I clearly remember when the team was first in here looking for an extension for contingency, it was raised to your attention, the water damage in the hallway, the water problems in the hallway. And that was by members of this board as well as the public. That was visual inspection. They didn't have to do a boring to, to tell you that this was a concern of theirs. And, and that didn't trigger additional looking into? You just decided it is what it is and we're safe to move forward?
No, again, we're looking for signs that would lead us to believe there was erosion, and we didn't have any.
Signs, though. I'm saying, people from the community, as well as colleagues, pointed out signs, visual signs, of water intrusion at that point. You were notified, and it's, it's on low telecommunications. So that was not enough to, to raise a flag, to go back and, and be a little more... So that was not enough to raise a flag, to go back and be a little more thorough on testing. Now we're here, looking for 40 million. We still don't have a guarantee that that's what it's going to be. And, I mean, I don't know, through you to the manager, what are our options here? I mean, I personally cannot support going for $40 million with no guarantee that we're not spending more, because this, in my opinion, is absolutely ridiculous, as many of my colleagues has expressed. But with no guarantee tied to that $40 million, which the city doesn't have, I don't see how we can even decide to move forward with this. I think we'd use some advice from you, Mr. Manager.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, make no mistake, I'm not happy about this either, about where we are and what is happening currently, right now. But given the fact of where we are, and we will have to rely on our state delegation, as well as any additional assistance we get from MSBA, I don't see another way, at this point, of stopping and just pulling back. We need to move forward, I think as Counselor Janess was saying, to ensure that the students have a good experience. We continue to move forward on this. I'm not happy that the number of borrowings weren't done early on. I mean, if we think about this, this has been going on now for close to 11 years, since 2014, I think, was the first discussion, and then finally approved in 2018. So some of these numbers that we're dealing with are, you know, probably close to seven, eight years old. I don't think there is a matter where anybody is happy about this. And to the team that is here, I don't think they're happy about delivering this message, either. However, I do think we need to continue to move forward. From your discussion earlier, or your question earlier, about the amount of excess levy capacity, which we do have, the amount of monies that we have put forward, which is, we can borrow up to close to $700 million, and currently, right now, we're probably close to, we're slightly under, around 375 to 385. So we have capacity. The problem is going to be, when we borrow, we're going to have to pay for that additional borrowing. As the council knows, from our FY '26 discussions, the high school alone, going into FY '27, this is everything that previously has happened, was about $6 million, a $6.2 million, give or take. And we know that that's going to go up to $8 million. So our following year, the council will have to try to figure out the delta between, let's just make the assumption that this $40 million is the final dollar figure. How much will the MSBA, how much can the MSBA assist us? Once again, with Senator Kennedy, Representative Howard Elliott, and Hong, I think that that is where the devil is in the details, is what this is going to end up costing the taxpayers. Make no mistake about this. This is something that is going to cost us additional money on a percentage basis. Next budget cycle, we'll be talking about the cost of government. The cost of government goes up, and anyone can throw out any number they want, 2%, 2.5%, 3%, whatever that cost of government's going to be. From that cost of government, there will be additional monies from this high school. But a lot of those decisions were made back in, say, 2014, and quite frankly, when we were looking at this, all of the debt monies are coming due, pretty much now. This additional funds that have been brought forward, quite frankly, and I know we've had brief discussions about this, the debt is now coming onto our books. And so if we were to vote through, which, by the way, there is no indication, there's not even an order to do that tonight, but in the future weeks, or months or so, when we come forth with a budget order, it could be any number, it could be 30 million, 40 million, 20 million, 100 million, that doesn't hit our books until we actually pull against it. So if you think of it from a bank's perspective, we put X amount of millions of dollars, the bank says, yes, we can borrow against that, we pull against that, and we only pay debt on what we actually pull. Think of it from your own house's perspective, if you were to, you know, get $100,000 for your kitchen, and you only spend 70, you're only going to pay $70,000 off of it, if that's something to think about.
So that difference from the $6.2 million to the eight annual, it's about a 1% increase on the taxpayers, correct?
That's correct. The $6 million to the $8 million, which we indicated in the FY '25, going into FY '26, if this conversation wasn't happening tonight, that's happening anyways. That was just, once again, the debt for the high school hitting the books for the city. And that is the planning that is moving forward. This, of course, once again, if you were thinking $40 million, you might be thinking, I think we ran the $2.6 million. That could be an additional $2.6 million per year. But we're going to be leaning heavy on our delegation and talking to folks. I do know that we've done some research on this. We're in and around the $560 per square foot-ish. I think that's right, Mr. Dowd? Is that five?
Five seventy-four.
Five seventy-four. Thank you very much for the correction. The $574 on the square foot, and I do know in the last two years, that number has been pushed up, and I don't even want to get into the 700s and the 800s that we've looked at. So this is a challenge. This is a difficult, I don't know if there's a, we need to move forward to get this completed. We need to lean on our delegation to discuss the financial impact for, the additional financial impact. Let's be clear, the additional financial impact. There was already going to be a financial impact on this, but we need to continue to speak with the MSBA, to talk about the maximum grant, which I think was $252 million, off the top of my head, to see if we can get that increased.
And so, last question, Mr. Manager. Worst-case scenario, no additional monies coming from the state delegation, from Senator Kennedy, MSBA says, sorry, you own this. What kind of percentage, realistically, are we looking at, just on the debt service on the high school project alone? If this $40 million is true indeed, the final number, what are we looking at percentage-wise increase, just off that?
Well, just on the new money, okay? Just on the new money, if we're talking $2.6 million, 1% is about 1.8 million, 1.5? 1.6%? So which would mean, next year's tax base, the first 1.6%...
Is spoken for on this project?
Would go directly there. And not accounting your insurance, and not accounting...
Everything else involved. Yeah, yeah, I'm saying exactly how you just answered. So you're looking at about a 1.6% tax increase to our residents?
Correct.
That, off the rip, is spoken for by this overage on the high school project, potentially?
That's correct.
And that's not paying any of our other bills, or anything else related?
Correct, Counsel. I think you know where I'm going with this, and I think this, Counsel, we've all talked about different aspects of this, but that 1.6, off the rip, would go directly towards the debt. For just this portion, let's be clear, there's still another portion of the debt that is all coming true. Whether we built it here, whether we built it at, whether we built it anyplace, all of this is, all of the debt is finally coming onto the books for the city of Lowell, and quite honestly, this council is going to be dealing with it, and the next council, and the council out. By the third council out, we might have realized all of the debt at that time.
So this $40 million ask is about a 1.6% tax increase or burden on the taxpayers moving forward?
That'd be correct, approximately.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Mr. Dowd and the project team for being here as well. I appreciate my colleagues' comments and questions. Those are excellent questions, the same concerns as I have, as the viewers at home have. But I still, you know, tough to handle, tough to grasp, because it's a huge project that not too many of us have. If, I think individually, most of us, in the past, have had to hire contractors to work our homes, and what have you. And we've sort of been trained, so to speak, to understand, to expect like a 10% to 15% overage, but this time, it's about 22%, and who knows if there's any more. It is a hard pill to swallow. And just to follow the questioning, the reasoning, Counselor Janess and Counselor Robinson had mentioned, it's about the learning curve of construction, and know what to expect and so forth. Honestly, none of us is going to have that capability, most of us, anyway, won't have the capability to understand construction or project size. But if it were a smaller project, like a project, if the contractor were to increase the price on us, we would have a friend, or get a second opinion somehow. But in a big project like this, a big company like this, I would imagine there's some kind of an audit in place, so that way, when there's a number being requested, a new request of project, what have you been requested, we do have some kind of a second opinion. And this might be a question more appropriate for the manager, Mr. Mayor. If I could through you to the manager, I know that you've been working, you and your entire team, and working very closely with the project manager. Is there some kind of an audit of some kind in place that we have, to just check the numbers, just the work? So that way, you know, regular people, so to speak, that, you know, not knowing the, so that way, we don't just accept, you know, the numbers as asking 40 million here, 1 million here, 2 million here, 5 million here, don't add up to now 40 million, you know? Just for our peace of mind, for transparency, do we have some kind of auditing in place? So that way, we know that, as Counselor Janess alluded to, we can have alternatives out of place to do, to make it work, so that way, a way that maybe we don't have to spend a whole $40 million, just wishful thinking, maybe, but my question is, is there an auditing process mechanism in place?
So, there's two things. So, you know, Mr. Dowd works for SCANS, right? He works for us. He's our eyes and ears on the project. So, you know, even though the poor guy's taking a whooping for the third or fourth time, his job is to work for the city. Also, he's the one trying to get the cost down, to try, you know, cut here or go there. But that's exactly what his responsibility is, and if you want to add something in, go ahead. But, you know, he should be the auditing, he should be doing everything, which, you know, I personally believe that he's doing, to try to get this down. And the MSBA does the same exact thing, at the end of the day. If we're going to take money from the state, they go through the whole process as well. If you want to hear from Mr. Dowd, he can speak on that as well, but that's, his only position in this is to watch out for the city.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for clarifying that, and, you know, we thank you for coming here the past couple of times, to explain to us what we need. But, so, when you, I guess, when you come up with these numbers and figures, which that you are testing this case scenarios with other projects, as Counselor DeCote mentioned before, like, are there other construction designs anywhere in the country that you check, you know, the work, the cost, and so, and you compare them, say, this is the best deal we got, this is what we have to work with? You have the process in place?
We do. And we are hired as the owner's project manager for the city, and we strongly advocate on behalf of the city. We stand up here, and we're described as the project team, but we all have different fiduciary roles. Our role as the owner's project manager is to advocate on behalf of the city. Also, checking those costs is the architect. In turn, Suffolk has a role as the construction manager, in which they review all the costs that come from the subs, and then they push back on those, and then we review those. In addition, the MSBA reviews the change orders that we submit to them. And I can confidently let you know that we are advocating strongly on behalf of the city. Yes, the six of us are all working on this project, but we all have different roles. And do we all get along at times? No, because we're advocating on behalf of the city, and we get in heated meetings on behalf of the city. This is not, we're not just taking these costs and passing them on to the city. I can tell you, that number, we show it at 47 million, going down to 39.8 million. I can assure you, that road, from 47 million to 39.8 million, was not a quiet or a very congenial meeting road. We are strongly advocating on behalf of the city, and I know Suffolk's strongly advocating on behalf of the city with the subcontractors. They have very direct meetings and uncomfortable meetings with their subcontractors to get the best value for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Yam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The project had gone far enough for us to do anything but to move forward. The question that I was going to ask had been answered by Manager Golden previously. The concern that I had would be, number one, I do not think that the state MSBA will come through because of the current situation, the tax base at the state, and the federal funding, so it's not going to be any, so I'm kind of, you know, braced for the worst, and I want a resident at home who watched the meeting tonight, that $39.8 million overrun, cost overrun of the high school, that all of the residents going to share. And my question for the manager, he already answered, how do we, you know, meet that if we go forward with that? And you already answered about capacity of lending. And then, in addition, I want the resident to know that, in the next fiscal year, 1.6% right off the bat, will be paying for this, so that, you know, so just for this particular high school, and therefore, when the council vote on the increase, I want the resident to know that part of that is to build this high school first class. And my only hope and prayer is that Mr. Dowd and the team has not come back to this council and looking for additional costs. So if the manager would like to comment of how the bond rating, all of that will affect if we borrow additional $40 million, would that affect the bond rating? And as a result, the interest rate that we will borrow in the future will affect us as well. So through you to Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager, if you could just talk about the effect of the bond rating, that may be affecting the city borrowing capacity, due to the fact that the cost of the high school is over around $40 million. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. The answer is yes, and maybe, with all in one breath. So once again, we have the ability to borrow additional money. It's just how we decide to pay for it in the future. And I think Counselor Robinson, right off the rip, we're going to be talking about, you know, 1.6, 2%, whatever the case will be, of monies coming forward. But there was a decision, I think we have to go back to the original decision. The original decision in 2014 was that we wanted a new high school. And we can decide where, and have this discussion about what, and how, and how we all felt about that. But the truth of the matter is, this council, and this next council, and I believe to the council after, the bill is coming due. Nobody is happy with this potential increase, with this potential overage, or why it happened. But the amount of money coming on to the debt, I just want to, what I guess I'm trying to do is remind the residents and the citizens that we all, we may have disagreed about where and how, but we all talked about a new high school, back in 2014. The reality is now hitting that this money is, and has been over the past couple of years, hitting the tax base. This is an uncomfortable conversation. It's a revenue problem, which we can solve. Unlike the towns that are around us, they don't have additional levy capacity. And what that levy capacity is, is when people talk about the city of Lowell not being affordable, to this date, to today's date, it is 14.4 million more affordable than it could be. That means we could, this council, I'm not saying it's going to happen, so anyone that I want to stop, you know, anyone from saying, this council, over the past decades, could have had taxes increased by 14.4 million. All of our neighboring towns have done that. This council has been very judicious, very judicious, and we know this. We've talked to all of you about trying to get additional revenue for different things throughout the city. So this council has done the job. However, these decisions to make, to build a high school, the payment is coming due. Even on top of the $40 million, we would still be looking at paying... Even on top of the forty million dollars, we would still be looking at payments coming in that this council, the previous council, this council, and I believe two other councils after this, will be shouldering the decision. So to the taxpayer at home, or the resident at home, thinking that this is just done willy-nilly, it's not. A decision was made, once again, eleven years ago, that we know as a city, we know what we want, and we want a first-class high school. And this is what it's going to cost. We could get into the whole piece of what this is going to cost for the high school, the incredible work that this council has done with all the horizontal construction. This is all going into our tax base. And I know you're doing it, I know this council has been wringing their hands over this, but the truth of the matter is, it is now here. The debt that we need to pay for the high school is here and future years out. I hope that answers your question, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you so much. And again, I want the resident at home to understand that the next fiscal year, there will be tax increase so that we will pay our debts, you know. You correctly said, it's just like, we have a borrowing capacity, but as a council, as this administration, we do not want to max out our credit card, line of credit. That's the reason why, you know, we were able to, however, with the needs of the cost overrun. And I agree with you that we all, fourteen, you know, like fourteen years or eleven years ago, that we agreed that we need to build a first-class high school, and now we almost at the end, and the cost overrun, and we all need to bear the burden together without pointing finger. We're not like, you know, tax and spending kind of council, or not at all, because we want the best for our student, for our resident to live in and to have a first-class education. I just want a resident at home to understand that, and that we all work very hard with administration, with all the people behind us here. They work diligently to try to reduce the cost as much as possible. I appreciate you for what you do, and I thank you, Mr. Manager, and your team. Thank you.
Councilor Getcher, something else?
Thank you, Mayor Rock. Through you to the construction team. It was stated that there were eleven boring holes. Were those done in the nineteen twenty-two, in the eighteen ninety-two floor? All eleven?
No, those were done in the entire school complex.
Okay, so I think with Council Robinson, and Council Robinson can correct me if I'm wrong, I think he meant to ask you, how many were done in the nineteen twenty-two building and the eighteen ninety-two building? Because when we took a tour, that number was extremely different, so.
On the east campus, there was two done originally.
Two?
Two?
So I'll let Council Robinson, then I'll finish in a minute. Mayor Rock, if it's okay with you, just to let Council Robinson speak.
And that spoke to my earlier point. Two boring holes. Then they turn around and say, oh-oh, we found a mistake or a problem here. And now, a total of eleven for the entire campus? I think we have a problem here. And I mean, again, forty million dollar overage with no guarantee, and we're looking at just this ask, an additional one point six percent tax increase, and two boring holes were done. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so another question, a major problem is that when we went on the walkthrough, Mr. Dowd can correct me if I'm wrong, it was, we asked that question, and we were told the reason why they didn't do more borings were because there were classes in there, and they didn't want to disrupt them. We have witnesses here that witnessed that conversation. And that, to me, doesn't signify doing the proper work pre-estimate. And we, look, I just want to be clear to the taxpayer. That gym opened up in 2022, and it already needs renovation. The floor has to be sanded down, the track's already ripping, the bleachers are out. So, you know, we're not even three years into it, and we're already renovating an area that was just renovated, or built brand-new. You know, the residents can't keep afford in our government, no matter what anybody thinks. Whether we have levy or not, I have a credit line that I would never max out because I can't afford it. And the residents can't afford that levy max. And the reason why Lowell has that levy condition is because they get fed a lot of state money that other communities don't get. So, I mean, when you look at these things, we have to be a realistic society. We want to subsidize everything, we want to give this, give that, but at the end of the day, I'm not sure the middle class and the elderly can still afford us anymore. And it's a major problem when you're looking at these projects, and we rely on people who come out and say, the reason why we didn't do the boring holes is because the classes were in there. And Council Robinson's not wrong, there were only two done, just for the clarification. Thank you.
That's it. I'll just wrap it up. You know, thank everybody for being here. I think every council that spoke tonight made excellent points of the situation that we're at. But the bottom line is, the selection of the location was a poor one. It doesn't matter how we got there, but it was a very poor selection. There are no fixed costs tied to a renovation. You know, we heard Mr. Dowd say earlier tonight that the percentage of the contingency went up exponentially when the renovation started, other than the new buildings, or the freshman building, and the gym, and that's where we're at now. You know, those old buildings probably better off dormant and trashed than to renovate, but, you know, there were nine counselors that are here right now that were yelling from the rooftops, whether we are in office or we are running for office, that said this would happen. We have currently eighty million dollars over the budget that was usually given to us, eighty million. And Mr. Manager, I hope we rely on the state delegation for assistance, you know, and being brutally honest, our state senator is one of the major reasons why we're here tonight in this situation. So I hope that the message is sent loud and clear, and that we can hopefully move on, because as Councilor Janus said earlier, we have to do what's best for the kids, get in the best possible situation going forward. And we hope not to see you again here in a similar situation. So, thank you very much. Returning to the agenda, is there anything else we need to take? We have a public hearing starting now? Quickly, four point one, a loan order, Forty Market Street. We will start off with the, open the hearing for all those in favor, in favor, in favor. The portion meeting is closed, all the opposition, 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 that portion meeting is closed. Any votes are adopted by Councilor Mercier, second by Councilor Decodo. Councilor Getcher?
Thank you. I was surprised to read that we were doing this under eminent domain taking. That was never said in any executive session that we were in that we were going to take this property. Not once during the executive session on this topic did anyone ever state we would be taking this property by an order of taking. In fact, when we were looking for extra space for the schools, we had to use Mass General Law's Chapter Thirty-B, which I believe on this project, we were looking for space. We did try to do this, and we only had one person. Real property is defined as property consisting of land, buildings, crops, or other resources still attached or within the land, or improvements or fixtures permanently attached to the land or on a structure. When we used Chapter Thirty-B process, we were able to purchase Saint Jean-Dauphine for two point four million, and it was assessed at over five million dollars at the time. This property, under an order of taking, we are paying three point six million. And the last, the three years of evaluation of this property for assessment reasons, in twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-two, the average was two point four seven seven three zero zero. And normally, under a taking, it's one point two five that you would multiply that by. So the taking would be, the taking price would be three million dollars. I don't know how we got to three point six. I have asked multiple times for the condition report of this property and haven't received anything. Is there asbestos in that building? How old is the electrical in that building? When we look at the air conditioning, what is the condition? We haven't received anything. And I had stated that multiple times, whether it was an executive session or here, I would not vote to buy another white elephant like we're going through now with city money. We don't have any of those answers before us. And I think, you know, just listening to the high school project and how that's being overrun with municipal money, and not knowing these things, it's hard to even ask us to purchase a property for more than it's actually worth in downtown. We can debate back and forth whether it's worth that much, but when you look at the assessed value, it's two point four million, and we're paying three point six for a taking, which, to me, is, I don't know many people are in the market for that building. And if they are, I think that we can find one or go out a Thirty-B process and get what we need at the same time as making sure that we have the condition reports before we even take these type of votes. I don't think this is a good vote to take at this time, and I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilor Janus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have to say that overall, I'm supportive of acquiring this building. I think the uses we've talked about make sense for this building, makes sense for the city, provides an opportunity to renovate JFK Plaza, oh, sorry, JFK Civic Center, to create a better police department in the long run. I do have similar concerns, though, to Councilor Getcher. I would like to see a condition report of the building before we're buying it. I don't know if that is something that happens before a loan order, after a loan order, just procedurally. So I guess that's a question, is which typically should go first in a transaction like this?
Mr. Manager?
Just which, should we be getting a condition report before we approve a loan order, or is that something we do after? I'm just curious on the timing of these kind of things.
Okay. No. Mr. Manager, good. Thank you very much. The administration's looked at this. The administration has had tours, just like all the councils that had the opportunity to take a tour, that could take that tour. I think that this particular building, yes, there will be asbestos in it, but it's going to be similar to what we purchased with the Jean-Dauphine building. The Jean-Dauphine building, which we purchased over in Pawtucketville, which is going in an excellent direction for our school department. I want to reiterate, the school department purchased it with money from Essa, and then we will be putting money in it from the city's perspective to open that up. So we've looked at the reports, I do know, and as a matter of fact, I walked through at Councilor Getcher, some of the heating systems, they are older, but they're in very good shape. They're in excellent shape, quite frankly. Buying this, they were, we were looking for, what we purchased at was the appraised value. Their ask was four million dollars, and we ended up purchasing it three point six million dollars. I think the opportunity here, as Councilor Janus has stated, I think it's a good opportunity. I think that when we're talking about the Lowell Police Department, when we're looking at, originally, people were discussing about building a new police department. We looked at the court site over on Heard Street. That number was two years ago, and it was north of sixty-five million dollars. I don't think where we are in this position that we'll be spending anything for a new police department. So the thought process is, once again, to create an area in the downtown. Some could say we're playing a little offense on this by purchasing this, bringing in all of our DPD, all of our planning development, everything, planning for what you could say is the future of Lowell. Many times, we've talked about what we should have done, and we didn't. So this is an opportunity for all of our planning, all of the development being in one location. I think that in this particular building, and the council is very familiar with this, to offer some additional swing space that is needed in this building. And quite frankly, some of our departments are not exactly in optimal space. Some of, the council has seen some of this space, and quite frankly, we shouldn't be asking anyone to go to work in some of these spaces. But I think that the big key here is, not that it's not going to be a true opportunity to create a one-stop shop, like I was saying, for building a deck or a multi-story building, you know, one, all the permitting that we do in one location, having that opportunity, but reimagining what can happen for JFK Center when that would be essentially emptied from our planning and development, and the police department having the ability to bring folks back into the area. Most of you know, some of our police department is around the city, and it'd be, once again, a great opportunity to bring them all back to this location and give a little bit of flex space to the fire department as well. So I'm looking at this as an economic opportunity as well in the downtown, in an area where I'd say we're playing a little bit more of offense. Once again, since I've been here and years past, we've always talked about, well, why didn't we buy? Why didn't we do this? This is that opportunity. And I'm not saying tomorrow that we'll be spending X amount of millions of dollars revamping the JFK Plaza, but quite frankly, I think it needs it. And I don't see the ability for us at this time, or quite frankly, any time in the next five years to ten years, of us building another, say, I'll tell you, it was a sixty-five million dollar ask for a new police station. I think this is where we should be, where we could be, and I think it creates incredible opportunity for us to move forward. That being said, in any building that, in my private life, I've purchased and dealt with, nothing here is ringing any bell that is scaring me. It's not scaring the Commissioner of Public Works. We've had our electricians in there, we've had our plumbers in there. That is not to say there won't be issues. There is issues with any challenge. But I think this is something worthy for us to move forward on, in my opinion, and most of the councils that had seen the space.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Not quite. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. I wonder if you can just run through the process by which we got to the three point six million dollar purchase price? I will say also that this, the topic of this transaction came up last night at the Downtown Neighborhood Association meeting. Overall, the neighbors were in favor of this move. I explained the planned use or uses of this building, what it's going to do for the city and the ability to free up some space, save some money, and not having to build a new police department somewhere. So overall, I am in support of this, and if we do vote on this tonight, I will be supporting it. But, you know, I would like, just for clarity for the viewers and residents at home, if we could talk about how we got to the three point six, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much. I'm going to be relying on our attorney here in a moment, but the due diligence was completed, and the assessed value is different from the appraised value. The original ask was, I think it was four point one million dollars. Then we leaned back on what we referred to as a friendly taking. We chose to go that way, to go with an appraised value. The appraised value came back, and I'm going to say it was three point six million dollars, and that's what we settled on. Once again, this is over a thirty thousand square foot building, and if we're just using dollars and cents of six hundred dollars a square foot, we're talking about purchasing an eighteen million dollar building for three point six million. Will it need some assistance? Very little. Most of the councils, I think, have walked through it. You know, heating systems and et cetera, they've done a very good job with their elevator system and the like. So I'm comfortable with where we're moving, but as far as the actual, Mr. Solicitor, as far as the actual fact, could you explain the process of taking, going down the friendly, what I'm referring to is the friendly, the friendly taking? There are unfriendly takings. When the city wants to take something for the betterment of the city, that is something that brings lawsuits. This particular piece would not. This is something, we came to this decision, worked with folks at a line credit union, and arrived at this number.
Mr. Solicitor?
Yeah, so this was originally spelled out, the April twenty-ninth meeting, for the original order of taking. There's a summary memo and cover letter that was put on the council agenda. So statutorily, the city, any municipality, is limited when you're going to purchase a building for municipal purposes. It's at a hundred and twenty-five percent, or one point two five percent, of the assessed value. And as the manager mentioned earlier, an assessed value is a very different number than the appraised value. So when we started to look at what the building was going to cost and what it was appraised at, the only way that we could proceed with this process was through a friendly taking. It's very common across the Commonwealth. There's a seller, there's a buyer, both are in agreement on a price, we're going to use it for a municipal purpose. So if you go the route of a friendly taking, both sides assent to the price and the process, and it allows the transaction to take place. Otherwise, statutorily, we wouldn't have been able to do it. So this is a route that a lot of municipalities going, and that's how we got here. And as the man- And as the manager said, obviously, the opposite of this is eminent domain, as everyone here sort of understands it. And it's a very different, complicated, and unpleasant process.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will concur that I think Align took good care of that building. It was in good shape. There's some dated fixtures and rugs and things like that, but, you know, that's any building that's been around for a while. Thank you.
Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good project. It's a great investment by the city. Mr. Manager spoke on the first round. You took away my speech, making this an economic development engine, a one-stop shop. It's very exciting. We've been talking for many years about reviving the downtown economic. You know, most of the councilors here, if not all councilors, have toured the building. We look around the inside, and we walk outside, we look at all the small businesses in the area, and we felt the excitement at how much of those businesses is going to grow with having this building housing, you know, pulling many of the city departments from surrounding neighborhoods and city into one place to make the one-stop shop. So I think it's going to revive the downtown economy, it's going to improve the services, make it a one-stop shop. I always think, I think from our previous life in the private sector, Mr. Manager, it's always better to own than to rent. I'm pretty sure that you work out the mortgage, the payment versus renting. It's going to work out, it's going to be much more profitable for the city in the long run. I will support this vote tonight if it goes forward. Thank you.
Counselor Yum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to you, to the manager. I just want to thank you for the vision, and I agree, professional experience that the building is worth $3.6 million or more. Counselor Chow and I talked about how we, the Essa City, got a really good deal on this property. From what I've seen, the commercial property around, which is less than what this building is, plus the parking that come with it and the condition inside, that it's really a good deal for the city. I will support this purchase of this. In addition, Manager Golden, you talked about that the department, various department will be moving into this building. Some of the department that are right now currently leasing space. So now we free up some of the rental that we pay to private owner. Now we save that and use it to pay our mortgage. And number three, the economic vibrancy downtown will create from having foot traffic of our staff and the resident who come for permitting downtown and all of that will bring the economic vibrancy to downtown. So I see a win-win situation for all, for the city for acquiring this building. I will strongly support this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I'm all for when opportunities present themselves. I mean, I think we missed the bus quite a few times. St. Louis, I'm going to continue to pound that one. I mean, what was that, 14-acre apostle in the middle of one of the densest neighborhoods in the city? For whatever reason, we didn't move when we could have. It was a little confusing to me why the eminent domain piece entered in the conversation, but I think you clarified that. Would the city be open also? How many square feet is this property?
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, three to the council, 32,000.
Would that, would the city be interested in potentially, because I've heard few small local nonprofits that are currently in lease that may be looking for 3,000 square feet of space if something's conducive down the line? I mean, is that a possibility with a property like this, too, to where we would sublease out space to help offset? Because, I mean, again, a couple of things really stand out. I've heard economic vibrancy and all of that. That sounds great, but, I mean, we already have these services in the downtown, so I don't know how much of an impact it's really going to have. You're just shifting from this block to this block. It's still within the same walking distance. Also, upkeeping maintenance of this. I mean, we struggle with our facilities currently, and we're taking on something this size that's going to require routine scheduled maintenance, upkeep, all of that. I think that's another concern we need to have. I think, as my colleagues did raise, and I think that's a fair, reasonable request, condition report. I mean, it's, I think we're all supportive of your vision of acquiring property when the opportunity strikes, and I thank you for that. But condition report, again, we just saw with the high school, visual inspections get us in a world of trouble. And so everyone's saying, it looks great, it looks great, but none of us here have really kicked the tires and opened the hood on this property. So, I mean, I think that's a reasonable request, to get a thorough, maybe it's a third-party coming to do a condition report on it, because, so that way we can make and inform, I mean, I'd hate to see, I remember we had the conversation, 3.6 purchase price, boost that number up for anticipated upgrades and improvements and everything. I'd hate us to eat that entire dollar amount up because there's unforeseen problems. And so, I mean, I will support the acquiring of this with the contingency, if possible. Can we get a condition report? Is that something that you're open to, is bringing someone in to really come back and say, okay, this is what it's going to cost us, so we can plan accordingly in the future? I mean, I know this loan order is basically saying, here's the money to purchase, you have a little bit of a reserve fund to do all the things that we discussed in the past. Could we get a condition report out of this ball of money here? Is that something that you'd be willing to supply?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, three to the council. Counselor, I'd always be willing to do this, but this is a real estate transaction. We've done our due diligence. We've seen what they have, the maintenance records. I'm never going to say that there's never going to be a problem in a build, any one of the buildings that we purchased, but I feel comfortable that we can move forward with this. To open backup negotiations at this time, to be quite frank, we've been going through this for quite some time, I don't know if Align would wait. But I'm comfortable, once again.
No, and I'm not asking about the, so maybe the condition, this loan order is to purchase, to acquire, but the contingency, the 4.2, that's not, you're going to have a little bit of reserve left after we had that conversation, right? That money that's left over after the acquiring, could we do, before there's a penny spent, could you report back to the council with a thorough condition report and say, this is the exact dollar amount it's going to cost us to get us to where I need to go with this property?
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, three to the council. That, yes, I can, I could do that. That's outfitting the building, et cetera, et cetera, and that's something we could do. There's no doubt about that.
Because when the conversation came up before, it was kind of like, you know, I want to put a little reserve aside in order to do some things, and you weren't really sure what needed to be done at that time. So before a penny's spent, I would hope that, you know, you can go in and get a thorough condition report and come back with itemized amount. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't like to be redundant, but everybody said exactly what I was thinking about as well. I did look forward to the opportunity to go and tour that building, because I didn't, I've never been in it, and I didn't know what to expect, and I was very, very impressed at the condition and the well-keptness of the whole building itself. There's five floors, very roomy, there's like a conference room on each floor, it's amazing. And then down on the first floor, if not the basement, there's a beautiful kitchen area for the staff to go and eat. There's also another room off to the side that looks like a triage, looks like it could be used for the health department, and I'm planning, ooh, the health department can go there, the DPD, Yvonne can have her office over here. It's a very beautiful building. I believe it's a very wise investment. But I was concerned about that eminent domain order of taking. I never realized what was this all about, but Solicitor Williams, as usual, explained it so that I understand, it's like a formality, very, very good. I'm ready to vote on this now, and I would support it.
Counselor Getcher?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Just to answer a few things, outfitting buildings is not a strong point of this city. We have many buildings in this city that are falling apart. This building is already at it. The electrical in there, I got a picture of it, 1985. The fire suppression system hasn't been inspected since 2020, took a picture of it that day. That's five years. The kitchen that Counselor Mercy is talking about is over 15 years old.
It's better.
When we look at St. Jeanne-Dark, and we looked at the purchase theories the manager outlined, the assessment value was five, over $5 million. We paid half of that, so that we did understand that it needed renovation. This place needs renovation. The GIS has the same evaluation for the appraisal as the assessment online. They're the same. So when you divide it all out and you multiply by the 1.25, it comes to 3 million. When we look at swing space, Mr. Manager, I agree 1,000% with you, and I was the one who came to you and said, is there a way to offset the cost of purchase in this building by bringing other departments in? I don't disagree with that. But I'm not sure that this building's condition is much better than what we're in, because in the next few years, it's going to need upgrades with people in it. And then, as you and I toured this, some of the space is not designed for certain usages, and we've got to get creative with some of that area. It's just, when you look at this building, and we talk about the Commissioner of Public Works, his hands are filled in other projects. For him to walk through, as you stated, and say that this is not a problem, stock closed a bathroom we built out of block. So, you know, when we start looking at things, and we start really looking and saying, is this a wise investment? It very well could be, but just understand that, just like the high school, we'll be back to the taxpayer looking for more and more remodeling of furnaces that are over 20 years old. There's a lot of things that, they look good to the naked eye to people who are not trained in looking at buildings, or somebody who's selling a building to somebody. But when you look at the building, the asbestos is in there, there's an older electrical system, the heating system is older, and it's going to take some work. And at 3.6 million is top dollar for this building. And we talk about economic development downtown. We once tried this. We put the school department down there. We put every single social service down there, including city departments, and it's not a driver down there. I just think that this is another place where we're going to get into that white elephant, and we're going to owe money, and we're going to have the same employees that are complaining about the place they're in right now. They're going to go over there, and they're going to be complaining another four or five years, and we're going to be into heavy money.
Counselor Dakota, what's that? We'll call Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Dakota?
Yes.
Counselor Getcher?
No.
Counselor Janes?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yum?
Yes.
Counselor Belanger?
Yes.
And yes?
4.2, General Public Hearing, VHB, Markley Group LLC, request installation of four 6,000-gallon diesel fuel emergency above-ground generators for a total of an additional 24,000 gallons stored on-site at One Markley Way. We'll start with all those in favor. In favor, in favor. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Attorney William Martin, offices at 491 Dutton Street in Lowell. I represent the Markley Group, and I'm here to speak in favor of this project. Just want to, a brief history of this site. In 2015, Markley first came to Lowell. This is the former Prince Macaroni site. At the time, Borden had moved out of that site, there was no more pasta being manufactured there. The site had been foreclosed by the bank and was being used as a construction debris, trash, and chemical drum sort of transfer station. Markley came and proposed a data center for this site and was welcomed into Lowell. We presented, not me at the time, but Markley presented a master plan for this site, was approved by the planning board in 2015. This permit that we're seeking tonight is the third time Markley's been here for the council. The council looked at the master plan in 2016 and approved the storage of diesel fuel for backup generators at Markley. Since that time, Markley's pursued the build-out of this site, spent millions of dollars to renovate the building and add equipment. If you fast-forward 10 years now, Markley has 106 direct employees in Lowell. 106 employees in Lowell, 36 of them are Lowell residents. Many of them are here tonight, they're up in the balcony and behind me here. A lot of the Lowell residents have T-shirts on that say they're for Markley and for Lowell. In addition, Markley employs another 100 people that are union workers that help operate the site and the equipment in the facility. 30 to 32 of those people also live in Lowell. So this has been a dramatic improvement on this site, and it's an employment opportunity for our residents. This is a data center. Our customers value their privacy. We're not able to say who many of our customers are, but you would certainly recognize some of them. They are national companies, many of them, but many are also local companies. We host the data for local hospitals, medical schools, universities, airports, transportation networks, phone and internet service operators, financial institutions, and businesses that operate in Lowell. We have letters of support for this permit from Lowell General Hospital, Tufts Medical Center, the University of Massachusetts, and the University of Massachusetts Lowell, from a number of abutters, from Massport, and the MBTA. And if I could just read briefly from the UMass support letter, one of the paragraphs in there says, "As UMass continues to work with our industry partners in drawing new businesses to Lowell, hosting one of the world's foremost data centers in our community," which this is, "is extremely valuable." So the university is fully behind what we're trying to do here. This project has already received a number of approvals. The planning board has approved this project. The Lowell Conservation Commission has approved the project. The fire department has signed off that the storage of diesel fuel on this site is safe, and the Mass Department of Environmental Protection has approved this project. We are seeking what is, I think, a relatively simple request. There is diesel fuel stored on the site that is permitted now, 47,000 gallons. We're looking to add 24,000 to that existing permit. These fuel, the fuel powers backup generators on the site that would kick on in the event of a power failure. They are all self-contained, each generator has its own source of fuel in the belly of the generator. So 24,000 gallons would authorize us to operate four more tanks than we currently have. The Mass DEP has approved these four generators. All the air and noise quality permits that are required to be issued have been issued. I know many of you took time out to view the site, and we appreciate that. You saw the site, and you know there are more than four more generators on the site. There are 25 generators now in the location. Not all of those are operational, not all of them have completed the DEP process, so when they get through that process, we'll have to be back to you for those additional generators. There are 11 operational, seven now, and four with this approval tonight, and then we'll be back to seek approval for fuel for the rest of them as soon as the DEP process is complete. There is a sequencing to the permitting. Usually, DEP gets first crack at it. We have to demonstrate that the generators meet the DEP standards, and then fuel is put in, the fire department tests, the fire department signs off, and then we come to the city council. So that's what our plan is tonight, that's what we're seeking approval of. Just so you know, the backup generators would permit Markley to operate for about 24 hours in the event of a power failure. A typical hospital, by way of comparison, would usually have enough diesel fuel to operate for 96 hours or four days. So that's the approval. I would like to just briefly address a couple of things that came up. This matter was referred to the environmental subcommittee, and there were a number of issues discussed there. One is where Markley gets its power. It purchases power from National Grid, like almost any other consumer of electricity. More than 60% of its electricity comes from renewable sources. Markley has solar contracts in place that will allow the purchase of an additional 40 megawatts of power from 10 solar fields. Those projects would not happen without Markley's investment. We do not think this project will impact really in any way Lowell's efforts to become, to reduce carbon, to reduce its carbon footprint. We're trying to get to a 1990 baseline under the council's standards, and we think this building will actually improve from the 1990 baseline and won't be a significant impediment to Lowell reaching its goals. So those were some environmental issues. Also, Markley has customer commitments to commit to ISO 50,001. to commit to ISO 50,001, which is a commitment to continual improvement in energy management and the establishment of useful and systematic energy management practices. That is the international standard. Our customers are holding us to that commitment and we will follow through on it. There were some noise issues raised in some of the, the site walk and other things at the subcommittee. These generators run, they get tested five minutes per week, plus an annual test of about two hours. So there's very low times when these generators are actually operating. They run in accordance with city noise standards and they've been approved by DEP. Markley has taken steps over the years to reduce the testing time. The DEP permit permits much more time, and we've reduced these to about five minutes per week per generator. There was an issue during the site visit about air conditioning units that are installed along Bourne Street. There will be additional air conditioner units there, and additional noise mitigation measures are part of the DEP approval for that. All told, Markley will have spent about six and a half million dollars on noise and air mitigation. There were some dirt piles that you saw when you, when you walked on the site. Those piles are temporary and part of the construction. The piles will mostly be incorporated into retaining walls at the conclusion of construction. Many of you were complimentary of the landscaping and other amenities that Markley has built on its site, and the same standards that are there for the land that's been finished will be implemented in the construction site when construction is finished. Also, Conservation Commission has approved this. There is, Markley takes great care to work on Hales Brook or the River Meadow Brook, does two cleanups a year there, and all stormwater discharge is infiltrated into the ground and treated before any discharge into the brook in accordance with the Conservation Commission's orders and conditions. Last, I would just say, you know, this is an innovative technology here in Lowell. Lowell's also always been sort of a source of innovation and technology. When you think about the mills in the 1820s, that was cutting-edge technology of its day. Wang, when it was here in the 1980s, that was cutting-edge technology of its day. What Markley has in this data center is the cutting edge of technology today. It powers AI, artificial intelligence. It powers quantum computing, and it's something that we should be proud to have here in the city of Lowell. We have our employees here to support this. They're proud to work at Markley. We're proud to have them working there. So I, I know you've been through enough presentations tonight. I know there are other speakers. We will have, we have plenty of people here to answer any questions. If you have Aaron Fernandez, who's Markley's Director of Design, Heidi Richards and, Heidi Richards and Katie Kudzma from our engineering firm, Vanessa Heng in Brussels, Steve Zember, who is an expert on health impacts. And if there are questions from the councilors, we have those folks here to try and answer. That, that's it for me, but I know there are others.
Thank you. Any else who can speak in favor, in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mary Burns, 90 Livingston Avenue, lifelong Lowell resident and big supporter of Markley. I also wear a very interesting hat. I am Chair of the UMass Building Authority, and we are very in the middle of the Link project, as you all know. We need Markley. In order for Link to happen, we need Markley. They store the data that these companies looking at coming to our campus is, it's required. They can't come here if we don't have Markley. I also want to say that Markley's been a great corporate neighbor to this city and to our students, which is first and foremost on my mind. We have a $10 million commitment for internships, which our students desperately need for their futures. So on behalf of myself and the university, you already have a letter from the President of the university, Marty Meehan, who was a resident or was born in that neighborhood, and Chancellor Chen, I urge you to please support this petition for additional diesel fuel. Thank you.
Anybody else who can speak in favor, in favor?
Good evening. My name's Dan Gilde. I live at 55 Willow Street in Lowell, Section of Sunaville. I work with the Lowell Sun Charities at the Golden Gloves of the Year Raise Money. And I went this year and a gentleman upstairs introduced me to a gentleman I'd never met before. His name is Mark Sullivan. He works for this company. And he said to me, he says, how do I get involved with the Golden Gloves here? What do you mean? You have fighters? No, no, I'd like to be a sponsor. So I introduced him to Kevin Coughlin, who I think a lot of people know, and a guy named Bobby Russo, who runs the Golden Gloves. Art Romano did a tremendous job for so many years. Nobody wanted to take the position. This guy stepped up. He lives in Portland, Maine. Anyways, they hooked up and they made a commitment to help him out. I live in Sunaville. I've seen a lot of change in neighborhoods where people say, that's not a good project, yada, yada, yada. I worked at the St. Louis project over there and all the neighbors didn't like that till they saw the final result. The manager was kind enough last Thursday with Counselor Robinson. I brought a couple of guys up from the North End that have restaurants. They have chains, and they're looking to put a restaurant in Lowell. I don't envy any one of your jobs as counselors, economic development, but this group, to step up like that, and, you know, they don't know who we are. And all I can tell you is, I don't know them, they don't know me, but at the end of the day, anybody that's willing to step up and, because the Golden Gloves gets kids off the street, it works good and they pay a lot of bills. But I'd ask you if you're supportive of that company. Thank you.
Who speaks in favor?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Rourke, City Councilors and City Manager Golden. My name is Chen Asme Chen, and I reside at 174 Hale Street. I'm here tonight in strong support of the Markley Group. I currently work at Markley for the New England Electric Group, and I'm a proud member of Local 103. I lived in Lowell for my entire life, and I remember when this area where Markley now operates was once home to a spaghetti factory in the area known affectionately as Spaghettiville. Since Markley opened its facility here, the transformation has been significant and has not only brought economic opportunity, but has also contributed to the local community. I've seen firsthand how Markley employees from foreman to journeyman have supported local businesses, especially around the Sacred Heart neighborhood. This has translated to both direct and indirect benefits for the local restaurants and shops. I understand that some neighbors has raised concerns about noise, pollution, and safety. However, it's important to note that Markley has shown transparency by actively engaging with the community within addressing these issues. Noise levels and pollutants are being mitigated, and the company has made it clear that they are committed to working collaboratively with the community. I urge you, our city leaders, to continue supporting the Markley Group. Our cities need businesses like this, ones that create jobs, contribute to our economy, and bring vitality to the local community. It's vital that we encourage sustainable growth, and with Markley's presence in the city, it is the right direction. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, I'm Kevin Patnod. I live on 21 Prince Ave in Lowell. I'm an abutter to the Markley project. I'm a union electrician who works there. I just wanted to express my support of everything that they're doing. I know that they have safety for workers first and, well, very closely behind the environment. To lose any of this project would devastate hundreds of Lowell residents, and I just wanted to voice my support of continuing this project and continuing on. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Casey, and I've been working at Markley for the past four years now.
Just, ma'am, for the record, your address, please. Just your address for the record. Yeah.
Oh, my address. I live at 100 Park Ave West in Lowell. So actually, to that point, there are 36 Lowell residents, including me, and we all care deeply about the community, and we're here on behalf of Markley because we want to stress the importance, not just as Markley as a mission-critical facility, but also as a pillar in the city of Lowell, providing different services to the local community. And there's numerous charities and organizations that we support, and I'm personally involved in a sponsorship for the Mill City Festival Fund, which includes Winterfest, City of Lights, and the Fourth of July. And we also help support UMass Lowell, and whether that be, you know, providing services for career fairs, and we sponsor the arena as well. And we also contribute to the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. And outside of those local charities, we also have done our part with a lot of cleanup around the area. And before we got the facility up and running, I know that Markley removed a lot of hazardous materials and waste from the property, and Hales Brook behind the property as well. They took everything out of the river from, like, bicycles to mattresses. And that is also an ongoing cleanup that they do throughout the year. So that's one time in the spring and the fall. So they're continuing to do that work as well. And I just wanted to say, you know, that I'm here with so many Markley employees whose livelihood depends on this company and would be greatly impacted by this decision. And just, we all care deeply about this community, and we're all here, and I feel like that's a testament to what we believe in Markley, its mission, and the positive impacts that it makes on the community. And I'd just like to thank you for this opportunity to speak as a person who lives in Lowell and also benefits directly from Markley, not just by, you know, in terms of employment, but also reaping like the benefits that Markley brings to the community. So thank you.
My name is David Olafland. I am not a Lowell resident. I live in 84 Arnold Street in Methuen. I'm a business agent for the IBW that represents the electricians that are on this project. The IBW, the commitment from Markley to use union labor and have people with healthcare and good paying jobs and pensions and a dignity when they retire. These guys are committed to that with us, and I think this is a good project, and I think, you know, it's, it's good for the community and it's good for the, the people of this, this community that are working there. So thank you for your time.
Anybody else who can speak in favor, in favor, in favor? The portion meeting is closed. Anyone speak in opposition? Opposition?
My name is Mary Wamboi. I live at 33 Moss Street, Apartment 10, in Lowell, Massachusetts. This is not personal. I care about the jobs, just as many people here have spoken. But the proposal from Markley must be rejected outright. It is deeply concerning that Markley's not a new company in Lowell. They're not just, just setting up today. And the fact that they would present a plan reliant on dirty fossil fuels, especially when we are facing a clear and urgent increase in energy demand from data centers, is ridiculous. It's not new. You can project load growth. They know how to do this. This is their job. This is their, this is what they do. They are huge. They are not a small player in this industry. It's disappointing because there has been a lot of innovative advancements in demand reduction technology, and the vast potential of renewable energy solutions available today are not, I mean, it's not the same as many years ago. So Markley's proposal is not just disappointing, it is a betrayal of a city that extended a generous 20-year tax break. I love attending city council meetings. We were here talking about a 40 million overrun, but in 20, about 20 years, you're going to give Markley about 77 million, if my calculations are correct, in tax breaks. Residents of Lowell have endured negative impacts of pollution, noise, and other disruption. These issues were reported by many residents nine months ago, before the planning board. A proposal that disregards, because it's disregard to actually have diesel and propose it in 2025. It is disregard of people's valid concerns, and it undermines the values of Lowell. It undermines our values. We deserve better for our environment, our health, and our economy. I have a question for city manager and councilors. So if MIPA decides to accept harmful substances in our communities, should we just permit it? Because it's MIPA, it's Massachusetts. They've given all the, you know, you get all the passes from the state or anywhere else. Should you permit just because MIPA does so or somebody else gives approval? Don't Lowell residents deserve just representation? Diesel particulates. Everybody knows. It's not rocket science. What they do, they pose significant health risk. Here in Lowell, you know that a majority of the residents around that community, around that facility are foreign-born, language-isolated, and as you know, Lowell has like twice the poverty rate of Massachusetts. So people are already facing health and economic inequalities. Don't those people matter? Lowell requires a comprehensive and coherent strategy to address our energy and climate priorities. We cannot be schizophrenic. Today, we want green. Tomorrow, we want diesel. Allowing a data center, and this is what we will be doing if we allow them to do this, we will be allowing them to be negligent, and that's not the way to handle load growth. Markley needs to commit to clean energy solutions, prioritize energy efficiency, to effectively manage energy growth. The biggest growth right now in profits in companies is in the AI sector. We're not talking about a company that's not making money. We give them tax breaks, and then they make a lot of profits, and then we allow them to pollute or not show us a respect by doing what they should have done, which is give us proposals that are energy efficient, give us proposals that are renewable. I mean, what will we be doing? The concerns of Markley neighbors should be prioritized and taken seriously. I know that politicians, I'm, I'm wrapping up. I know that politicians, you know, sometimes get hoodwinked by room presence, but I'd like to remind you that your responsibility is not just to the people who are in this room. It's to the entire city of Lowell, and most of it is not represented here. We need to be heard. We need to be respected regardless of our, of our status or influence, and it's time to, you know, to prioritize our well-being. This is not about green or, you know, being excited about clean energy. It's simple. Energy efficiency. They didn't even talk to us about what they're doing about load growth. Their load growth is going to shoot up soon, very fast. I'm in this field, and I know that's what's going to happen. We need to do something about it. We can't just give them a pass. Thank you.
Anybody else who can speak in opposition? Opposition?
Hi, mine's Neil Dale. I'm speaking for 350 of Greater Lowell. We're a volunteer climate organization. We're trying to help Lowell grapple with the climate crisis. And I wish we had 50 employees. We could dress up in T-shirts and clap for us, but we're volunteers, and we're volunteering to help the citizens in South Lowell because they don't have a lot of people to clap for them either. I really mostly want to say that, I want my notes, that, that the data centers are, are probably the biggest load, new growing load on the energy nets across the country. We know that. We hope, we hope that the city is going to make an equitable arrangement with the Markley Group. I mean, we can't be party to the negotiations, but we really hope that they can do that. We see now that they're negotiating, you know, that, that the National Grid has to, has to now juggle two substations in order to in order to supply the necessary electricity. And it's going to go up. As Mary said, it's going to go up. And they're asking for four more generators, but soon it's going to be another 10. They'll be back, and we know this. So, we really hope that you guys can make an arrangement with them. So, we're not trying to put them out of business. We know that they're supposed to. We know that they've got a good business here. It's not like anybody who's on our, I'm speaking for is against them as a company. But we want them to be more responsive to the community. And particularly, I mean, we're, to have 71,000 gallons now of permitted diesel fuel is very distressing. I mean, I did a little work with a solar company, and I put in their address. And I found out that if you put solar panels on their buildings, plus a little, some of their parking lot, you could generate about 2 megawatts of solar power, which is about 2 million-plus kilowatt-hours a year of free, green energy. And that's, it's not that much. It's not enough to run their plant. But it is plenty to run any kind of like five-day iron-air battery or any kind of fuel cell that they could put in as energy backup. They could do that. It, what gets me is that they are not coming forward with these ideas. They're not saying this. Mr. Markley says that they're innovative. They're not. They're stuck in the 20th century of diesel. And that's not right. I mean, you know, we have to come forward and make these suggestions that will help them save money. Because if they get that much money, you know, constant solar supply, they're going to reduce their electric costs. So, we have to, we're having to help them save money. We're having to help them really be helpful to the climate crisis. And we're having to help them be a good neighbor to the South Lowell place and the grid there and reduce their drain on the grid. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Opposition? Opposition?
Hello, Sarah Lapp at 200 Market Street, Number 416. And I just want to say that I think one of the things that we may be overlooking with the data center industry is the pretty like intense explosive growth. And I think that that site is constrained by neighborhood. There's only so much space. And at some point, they will need to expand, and they won't be able to. That's just the reality. And they may tell you differently, but that's the reality. So, the question is, where are they going to go? And if we think that this project is appropriate to have all this diesel burning in these diesel generators and generating PM 2.5 into the neighborhoods where there's kids that are growing and having to breathe this in. If they're going to go somewhere else, there's more space in, you know, Belvedere, maybe? So, maybe we should put it there. And if that's objectionable to you at the council, then we should understand why this particular neighborhood has to be sacrificed for the needs of corporate profits. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michaela Honduras-McCarthy, and I live at 216, no, that's my childhood address, 618 Stevens Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I just want to clarify one thing that I believe Mr. Martin said about the commitment to renewable energy that Markley has in saying that 60% of the energy that they use is renewable. That is state-mandated. That's nothing above and beyond what's already mandated by the state of Massachusetts, is 63% in 2025. So, they're not really going above and beyond there. So, I'll just point that out. These additional generators will facilitate their ability to fulfill more contracts, earn more revenue, which is great. I am not anti-data center. It's very important to the development of the city. Like, I totally get that. But with earning that more revenue, expanding, that will have direct impacts to the Lowell neighbors. And they should be providing a benefit to those neighbors who are undergoing the noise, pollution, and extra risk by living next to this data center. On June 3rd, Markley, the subcommittee council meeting, subcommittee meeting, Markley said that they're planning on another phase of construction, and will be back for more appeals. So, here's what I'm asking you to consider. Something Counselor Scott, I think, proposed. At minimum, there should be a requirement to work with the Sustainability Department in the meantime, before they come back, or how about even just now, with working for alternatives to the additional pollution to the immediate neighbors before they grow again, or make it a condition now. Here's an idea that I think Neil already suggested, is putting solar on the roof. And you could also send credits to all of the abutters from the production of that solar to reduce their energy bills. Just an idea. There's a lot of other things that they could probably do. But I think using now as an opportunity to really try to mandate that they do something a little bit more would be great. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Jake Forth. I live at 36 Iowa Street. I don't know, I just did something over here. But what I wanted to come here basically tonight is to go through the site walkthrough that we had happen. Not everybody attended. And for the folks who did attend, not everything was on. Everybody was kind of fractured about the property when we were going through. Different things were pointed out. When the south side generator was fired, it was actually fired earlier that day, which meant it was a warm burn. It was fired around 3:00 p.m. So, the fumes that came out of it weren't from like a cold start, which you kind of witnessed on the north side of the property. When they fired it, there was a lot more fumes that came out of that one versus the south side. So, now I've gotten to see how walkthroughs work when folks are coming to visit. Also, it got insanely quiet. You commented that you could hear birds. They were louder than the generator. I will show you what it is not right now. All right, hold on one quick second here. That wasn't on. This. We were subjected to this overnight for almost 20 hours because something failed. That's 80 decibels. At my property line, it was 66. 80 decibels comes from the city inspector. That noise wasn't on when you were on-site. I attempted to show you guys where that noise was coming from. And I was told by the Markley Group to get away from the fence. You guys couldn't get close enough to see that. So, just know, your walkthrough was very well curated. And I want that to be known. Now, how many times have I stood before this council? To the new councillors who don't know me, I've been here for every single meeting since 2016. Why 2016? Because the original plan that Markley Group gave to Lowell was that all of the generators were supposed to be on the north side of the facility. They lied. Immediately after they got their foot in the door, they said one thing to the residents to get us to go along with it, and then they changed it immediately. The best part is, is what we've been fighting for is to have all of the generators on-site be the same. Have the ripos air filters. Why are the people in the back suddenly getting much better technology than those of us who have been here and fighting the longest? I have been here at every meeting. Councillor Mercier, you can attest to that. Councillor Cory Belanger over there, he can attest to that. Mayor Rourke, you can attest to that. Yet, the ones, the generators on the north side, the new ones that they're coming before you to turn on, are far better and emit much less toxins than the four that are behind me. And the people who did come know how close those are to me. They're right on top of my residence. Trying to work this out, they raised the stacks up. But if you notice the stacks and how my residence is raised, that didn't accomplish anything. Because when it shoots out in the air, it cools and then settles down. So, that comes right into my property. In order for them to have a stack high enough, you'd be looking at like the Peker Plant on Tanner Street. Basically, a power plant. That's what this has become. We're an environmental justice community. I'm sure you guys have heard that said. With that comes all of the other things that go with it. Breathing problems? We're front row to this. We've been front row now for nine years. We're asking for this to be fixed. And the only way to stop them from continuing on and not fixing the problem is to putting a stop to approving it. They're not amenable to changing things when asked. And it's always, we're going to do this next. So, you're going to approve this tonight, possibly. But then they're telling you that the noise attenuation is going to be installed by August. Those that were on the site heard that. They said August. We're going to fix all the noise on the east side of the property in August. This was supposed to be temporary, that noise that I gave to you. It's now going to be installed for almost one year. It's been 10 months. It's always temporary, and then something changes. Once they get what they want, things change. And the ones who suffer the most are always the abutters, always the neighborhood. And that's why I'm asking you guys tonight not to support this and put an end to this. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Steve Malagodi. 200 Market Street, Number 216. I'm going to be really, really brief because we've been here a long time. There's only one issue before you tonight. Only one set of facts you need to think about. And that is the sighting of 75,000 or 100,000 gallons of diesel fuel in the middle of the city. 100,000 gallons. Hello, fly. So, all that other stuff about where the, what the property was before and what condition it was, and how much garbage they take out of the canal, and how much money they give to charities, and all this other stuff, it's all irrelevant. The only thing you have to think about is whether you're going to permit 75 and then 100,000 gallons of diesel in the city. I just want to point out that the environmental subcommittee meeting, something really important, I thought it was really positive, and I thought it was a really great breakthrough, in that Markley agreed to enter into discussion with the Sustainability Director and come up with ideas and perhaps a plan on how they could work with the city to help everybody achieve their goals. Markley's goal and the city's goals. Now, I want to point out to you that a yes vote tonight is incompatible with the city's climate goals. It's incompatible with the state's mandated climate goals. It's incompatible, a yes vote will be incompatible with Lowell Forward. If Lowell intends to move forward in its next step and become a climate leader city, which I think is the logical next step for the city, it's incompatible with the climate leader status. It's also incompatible with the goals of the frontrunner city. Frontrunner city status that we are hopefully trying to achieve. Now, I understand there's some dignitaries from the, some international dignitaries coming to visit Lowell to take a look and see about our frontrunner city status possibilities. That's going to happen next month. This vote tonight is going to be fresh in the minds of a lot of people when those people, when those dignitaries come to town to talk about frontrunner city status. Now, I just want to say again that Markley agreed to enter into discussions with the Sustainability Director. Hopefully, that was an honest remark on their part. But if you do this, what you're going to be doing is undercutting the authority of your Sustainability Director. Markley will have no reason to even return a phone call if you give them what they want tonight. There's no reason for them to discuss anything if you're going to give them exactly what they want. Finally, Markley is not going to go out of business if you turn this down tonight. They're not. They've been operating successfully for seven years now. They're not going out of business if you vote no tonight. What they should do is honor their comment to work with the Sustainability Director over time to come to a reasonable, logical, technologically feasible solution to this. But diesel is not on the table. Let them continue. Let them work with the Sustainability Director to come up with answers that work for everybody. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in opposition? Opposition?
Good evening. My name is Eileen Castle, and I live at 64 Otis Street. I am here this evening to discuss some of the problems the neighbors are having. In regards to the fuel for the generators, they have installed without permission. I think the Lowell Fire Department should have a plan in place before anyone agrees to 19 generators. They've installed 21. But at this time, I think the Fire Department needs to be able to help us out and give us some answers to what they need to do or what the Fire Department. Markley may have some answers, but I'm not sure I believe all their answers because nothing they've told me has been really all true. During the walkthrough, we did not need the wall, we did not, we noticed the wall along Bourne Street is failing, and the drainage is coming down into the Markley property. This should be addressed by the city. This runoff will be going into the Brook. Also, up on Bourne Street, the water collection is because Markley has stopped the water from going down to their property because that's how it's always been. I've lived there all my life. My family lived there. My house was bought from the Bleachery. So, I know exactly what's going on. And I just want to make sure that you understand that this is not just us in the neighborhood. Markley has not done the things that they have said they were going to do. None of them. I spoke about the noise and the water coolers that they are making. They said they were going to install seven more. They only had permission for two to begin with. But now they have seven, and they want seven more. And they're causing noise. You can't walk down the street without hearing them. You can't sit in your yard without hearing them. So, I think maybe somebody in the city needs to find out what we can do. A comment was made that maybe they ought to take and go up beyond the fence because Markley said that that's as far as they have to go for noise. Well, what happens to us in the homes that live up there? If we have noise all day long, nobody wants to live there. Anybody want to take over my house? I suppose they're welcome to. I would like to know if they intend to build and that wall that they're talking about up over the coolers. I would like to know when they intend to do it. I think it should be done before they get permission for all this stuff. And I also think that I would like the city to look into what kind of material they're going to use to stop that noise. I think that's important. I think that we in the city don't pay attention to what people say. They just say, oh, this is what we're going to do. And nobody knows that. I think that all of these things, these are examples of before they get this fuel permit. I think the neighbors need an exit plan. So, if something happens down there, has anyone thought about the neighbors? And how are we going to get out? We're right next to them. It's not like you have, you know, I have maybe 50 feet, if I even have 50 feet from them. Do you want to live with that? I'm not down at the end with the fuel. So, I'll guarantee you that, but just so you understand. And I'll be through in one minute. As far as everything's concerned, I think Lowell needs to think about what they've said they want to be a kind of carbon, as far as carbon-free in 2025. And I think you need to think about the neighbors more. I think that Markley is making billions, not millions anymore. I think they're making billions. And I think it's time for us to say, okay, let's do something for the neighbors and get this place taken care of. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Alex Solange. I live in 15 Robinson Street, and I own 21 Robinson Street. I had a long talk, but I try, I know that you all want to go home, so I respect that. Everybody probably tired. So I'm going to try to, I tried to do, I tried to be in the meeting, the open meeting that they have, and I email, I make the appointment, and they turn me away. They let me in inside. I email, email you guys, and nobody let me in. I called the city council, and nobody let me in. I wait 20 minutes, and I couldn't get inside. Well, I am not against they making business here. And when I heard that they need so much electricity, I assumed that they have high-tech computers here. No regular computers, quantum computers. I'm very familiar with that, because I had a tenant that they had, that was working and kept quantum computer. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you a couple of things. In my neighborhood, I'm here because I represent 15 families. We have 25 kids, and we against this. 40 generators are you trying to, last time was 27, and now it's 40. So 40 generators, we putting greed on top of our health. That's the matter. We have to resolve this in the best way. If you have so much money, why you cannot go green? Why you cannot at least try? Because every week is more generators, more generators. And what about our health? Lowell already is in 110% of the problems with respiratory. Myself, I had a pulmonary embolism. I can't even be around 40 generators. I've been there 20 years. And I have all these people here. I have from 64, 54 Robinson, 63, 36. I got 15 different families here that oppose this bill. They didn't know about it. They didn't know about that you guys wanted 40 generators. Also, one thing that kind of bothered me is that, I would like you to be more consistent. If you're going to put a wall, put a real wall that actually block the noise. If you don't know what that is, you just go to the highway and look at those walls. They absolutely very efficient, they're very high, they block the noise for the people that live across you. The second thing is, you have to find a way to get electricity that is not polluting with 40 generators, or we can't have to breathe that. We have a school right there, we have a park behind them, and, and we, most of the neighborhood, they have problems already with the health. Lowell has a problem with respiratory problem. It's 110% over Massachusetts. Lowell is one of the worst polluted cities here, Massachusetts. I really would like to, that we can get an understanding of how we can fix this. And my feeling is that, that they are not willing to do anything. Just donate some charities, that's wonderful. It's always gift to the poor, you know, give to the kids. They are our future. That's great that you creating jobs, absolutely great. But you are not putting attention to the more important, is our health. So this is greed over health. You can still keep doing business, and why you don't look for another alternative? There's not 40 generators, because last week was 27. Now they said that it's 40. So you have to breathe 40 generators. I don't know, the noise can be fixed with a big wall. You can put a wall that can actually block the noise. But we have to get to the point that, we have to get an understanding, you and us, we have to get to the middle point, where we can live together. I appreciate the time that you guys gave me. I hope that, that we can get to the point that we can discuss this, and really to discuss it, because I have 15 families that they are opposed to what you're doing right here. And if we can get this settled, it will be great, because we are not willing to back I'm going to make that clear today. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And some opposition? 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 That portion meeting is closed. Open for council discussion. Council Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city solicitor. Do we have an option as a council to do anything with conditions before, like, either way, approval, or denial, whatever, with conditions, though? So where, whatever was decided, it wouldn't really be able to take place until that condition was met? Is that, is that one option that this council has?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, under the statute under chapter 148, it does allow for certain, you know, prerequisites and conditions to go along with in issuance of the permit, or an amendment to the permit in this instance. I think whatever that looked like, it would have to be clear, and certainly able to be achieved in something that's attainable. Otherwise, it probably wouldn't serve a purpose. So I think that would, that would be my advice, if that was what the council wanted to do, whatever it was that they were asking, it would have to be clear and something that could actually be, you know, accomplished.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I will tell you that when Markley first came to the city, I was on the council, and I had the opportunity to tour the facility all those years ago. I don't know if it was seven years ago or 10 years ago, but I seen piles of dirt, and I saw a property that seemed to be pretty much starting to be maintained to manicured status. It looked pretty good, and I heard this and saw that. I went the other day, and I didn't know what to expect, but I saw a vast amount of land. Those piles were gone, and new piles were very high. And judging back for all those years and seeing that that pile was gone and replaced by beautiful landscaping, I'm sure this takes time, too, and they're going to do the same with that. I was concerned about the noise, because that's what people talked about. And I don't know if it was a setup or what, but yes, I will tell you that there were crows on the building that were louder than anything I've ever heard in my life. That would have drove me nuts, but the fact is, the generators were, you could hear it, but it was not a, not something that would annoy me. There was a motorcycle that went by that scared the devil out of me, I'll tell you right now. My heart went, sunk in my hands. But I, but I listened, and I, I wish I had written it down, but I tried to put down as much as I could remember. But I did see all the people there, the Lowellians, 35 people that wouldn't have otherwise had a job, have a job. That bothers me, and I'm thrilled. That made me feel good about it. I'm sorry that the neighbors are upset, but I just want to tell you the positive things that I've seen. I'm a very dynamic supporter of unions. IBEW workers in Massachusetts, they got 100-plus union electric plumbing jobs on site. I'm very happy to hear that. We know that it's tough to get a, find a, a jobs that are, you know, in the swing of moving along, and they're doing a great job hiring, and I'm happy about that. Markley conducts a cleanup. It might not mean anything to anybody else, but talk about clean water, it means a lot to me. Twice a year, they conduct a cleanup in the River Meadow Brook, which is known as Hales Brook. And when they discharge water, they have drainage situations. It's cleaned by, by order of the Conservation Commission's standards and permit. So if you think that we as a council are going to vote yes or no, they had to go through many hoops in order to get to where they are. Markley is and will continue to be supporters of nonprofit organizations, very important to me. Maybe these things don't mean anything to anybody else, but these things I'm bringing up, because these are the things that I look for. These are the things that matter to me. They didn't get here by chance. They had to have site plan approval by the planning department, order of conditions by the Lowell Conservation Commission, air quality and noise permits from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. I mean, I'm not an authority on this, but if they can support it, I don't know why I can't. Permits are fully approved by the Fire Department. I'm not a fireman. I don't know the first thing about it, but the Fire Department approved it. Now, I know that we as a council approved generators in 2016 and in 2019, but I just want you to listen to some other facts that I, I didn't take this lightly. I did a little bit of homework. Critical 24/7 operations in Lowell also have backup diesel generators. This isn't the only company that has generators. Local hospitals have generators. Typically, they have fuel to operate for four days for 96 hours. Markley has fuel capacity for only 24 hours. Let me just tell you this. Lowell General Hospital relies heavily on diesel power to provide uninterrupted services when the power goes out, such as in October of 2019, Lowell General Hospital was to pick up the power system, which aligned with the best practice during critical medical emergency service when power goes out. Let me tell you this. If I'm on the operating table at Lowell General Hospital and the power goes out, those damn generators better kick in, because I want to live. Plenty of neighbors surround Lowell General Hospital. I don't hear them complaining. So now, here's another fact. Part of UMass Lowell, you heard Mary Burns, the project is Link. The Link project is coming here. It's very instrumental. One of their project people coming in is Draper Labs. They're coming to Lowell because of the cloud storage service provided by Markley. They're coming here because of Markley. I just did a lot of research on the pros and the cons. Nothing is perfect. Nothing is perfect. And I'm not saying the neighbors should hear all this racket, but I think what I saw with my eyes was walls going up, not just walls, but trees as barriers. I think they're doing everything they possibly can, although I am concerned about the gentleman that came here and had that tape with that running. I gotta check that out and make sure that you could correct it. I don't know if he was promised that in 10 months it would be solved or alleviated to some degree. If that's not happening, I like people that say they're going to do something to keep their word, so I just check into that. Nobody's perfect. I'm certainly not. I know you find that hard to believe, but I'm not perfect either. Now, Markley has ensured the site have green space, and the landscaping is second to none. I could have wanted to have a picnic on the property. That's how beautiful it was. And those temporary dirt piles will be removed as they were 10 years ago when I was there. They're not there. It's beautiful. Any violations of state permits are reported to the local Board of Health. I don't think there's anything on file that I could find, but I just want to know. I, I just want good neighbors. I want you to be good neighbors, and I think I've seen that. And I'm so glad that everybody here has a job, and I'm so glad that the unions are here, too. So I really don't have a problem, and if we vote tonight, I'll support it. Thank you.
Council Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's wonderful that it's going to benefit so many people financially here in this room, but who it definitely has not benefited is the neighbors in the neighborhood. They have not been good partners. They have not been good neighbors to this neighborhood. This is a vote against the neighborhood, in my opinion. It is a densely packed neighborhood. It's an economic justice neighborhood with high asthma rates. We did a tour that was very selective. Some of us were told to get away from certain areas, walk away from that fence. There's a dirt pile, you know, that the neighbors have complained about that was still there. They did hydro seat it for the tour, I noticed, but they hadn't up until that point in time. Additional concerns the neighbors had brought up in the past, the fence out back, you walk in the front, it's Fort Knox. You walk in the back, it was unfenced for years. The dirt pile that's there right now has knocked the fence down. You can climb up over the dirt pile. So these are their concerns with adding more diesel fuel. They already have another eight units in front of the Mass DEP. It doesn't stop, and they never tell the neighbors the whole story about what's coming next. So another 8, 48,000 gallons of diesel fuel coming ahead next. This goes against our master plan, the Lowell Forward, to be carbon neutral by 2050, and if we don't demand cleaner energy, these groups will never do it. They're huge corporations. We have a say right now. I would ask that we table the motion and ask them to come back with language that require, we can work with the solicitor, with our sustainability coordinator, table this motion, bring it back, and incorporate that yearly check-in on the permit that requires that. So that's my motion, is to table at this point in time.
By Council Scott? Is there a second? Council Gitcher? Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, before we do the roll, can I ask a question on that point?
No discussion, we can't discuss it. Let's go right to a roll call.
What's the vote?
The table, the table of votes.
Oh, I see, okay.
No discussion. Table? Council Chow?
No. On the, on the, on the public hearing, yes, we can. But the motion was brought to table, and that's all we're talking about right now.
Council Chow?
No.
Council Dakota?
No.
Council Gitcher?
Yes.
Council Janess?
No.
Council Mercier?
No.
Council Noon?
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
No.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
No.
Council Belanger?
No.
Motion fails. So I got Council Belanger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To that point as to the motion, now, if I can give a little history here on this petition, and I understand, first, if I may, thank you to the speakers coming down, both for and against tonight. I understand, I have a full understanding that projects like this fall on the backs of the abutters. But the history is here that the first reading on this hearing, Todd, we got here tonight, was back on April 8th, about 75 days ago, where it was then kicked to my environmental subcommittee, which I chair. It was gladly received. So this by no means was fast-tracked to get here tonight. During that time span, I was able to organize not one, but two separate site visits on the Markley property. Now, not very common. We are talking about a very sensitive business in nature, where allowing elected officials in abutters roam freely, not to a point, on the property is virtually unheard of. But I was able to achieve that, because having served on a zoning board of appeals for 10 years, again, I got a complete understanding that a projects like this, I've seen it all over the city, do fall directly on the backs of the abutters, and that they are owed every bit of information, whatever they, on top of what they can see and hear. So that being said, we were able to get on that property twice. During that, as Council Mercy alluded to, the matter at hand here was the generators. They were able to kick on a generator. We sat to the furthest point on the property line, closer to the abutters, to get the best feel that we could of what the abutters were going through. And as I was told by planning board members, you could barely hear it over a conversation. That's what I hear. I don't doubt what one of the abutters went through that evening, and I'm sorry to hear that. I am sorry to see that. We were looking... We were looking to it that that doesn't happen. Also, emissions, obviously a big issue with diesel engines. Is it perfect? Certainly not. Okay? But I was also able to have a -- the first conversation between the Markley Group and the Sustainability Director, Catherine Moses, I already had one, and will continue to have ongoing conversation, as I was -- we were told by the Markley Group, and they will be held to that. Now, diesel engines, again, is the technology, fortunately, that's being used all throughout the countries, hospitals, data centers, all over the country. Now, the purpose of the conversation, the match between the Sustainability Director and the Markley Group, is to work on future technologies as we move forward. Now, Markley Group is nearing 10 years old. These generators are at the same age. The first initial generators are the same age. So we're hoping, the hope is that as we move forward, as these generators age out, we can defer from fossil fuels to a more renewable form of clean energy. That is the ultimate goal, but for right now, today, in 2025, it's basically all we have that's dependable and reliable for this kind of facility to meet their energy needs. Yes, we have solar, a common household, sure, we can do that, but not a facility like this. It has to be dependable, and this is where we're at for the time being. So I'm confident in the future, there will be conversations that are ongoing to help us defer again from fossil fuels to a more cleaner, renewable form of energy. So to the abutters, it pains me, really. I've seen what these projects can do, and our obligation is to mitigate the disruption as best we can, as best we can. And what I saw that day, I did see a concerted effort. I mean, the day of the walk-through, we were there for diesel engines and emissions. We ended up putting three or four other verbal conditions on them that day for grounds. We were not happy with the condition of the grounds, the cooling systems up top, a wall to two, while that is level more -- level with the abutters as the topography of the land with the facility more sits lower. So we were there for one thing and improved on two or three others. And the Markley Group, to me, seemed very open to that, and that's what I want to see from a business who's looking, who's doing an ask here, looking to expand, not, I mean, on their own footprint now. We're not talking approaching more into the neighborhood. It's an expansion on their own footprint. Now, we do have some letters of support here, okay, from UMass Lowell. We heard Mary Burns of the UMass Lowell Building Authority as to the Link project, as to why companies like Draper chose Lowell. The iCloud storage that we can provide to them is -- this is instrumental. Lowell General Hospital, Massport, MBTA, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I could go on and on, are all their clients. Now, again, I can't stress enough, this is not ideal. I get it, and we're going to do everything in our power as we move forward to improve the technology as best we can, but I don't think I'd be very responsible tonight to say no to them. There is too much at stake in our future with future growth. If we want to be a hub of innovation and technology, this expansion is crucial. And I will be supporting the project tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
There you go. Every counsel wanting to speak, so Counsel Gitcher in next.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I want to be very clear to everybody in the audience that I would never put their child or family at risk of a health issue. And when you listen to all of this, it is tried and true right in front of you, and there are risks, it looks like. I've never had a dealing with the Markley Group before, so I can't say that I know the Markley Group at all. I know that South Lowell meetings, they've been readily available and have taken the brunt of a lot of issues surrounding them that have nothing to do with the diesel, but I'm optimistic in seeing the movement of late as we went through the tour. I think all of us went through a tour, and they said that they would fix the fence. When I asked about the elevations of the exhaust and the elevations of the noise to the homes, they said that they would go over, they would take the noise level because they're only responsible to 10 feet over the property line. But they said, and again, I haven't had long-term relationship with them, but they did say that they would take care of, they would go up to the rooftops and take the noise levels up there. When I heard the noise coming from that generator running, it's alarming. When you, I asked, is there a way that maybe we could update the generators on the east side of the property to the newer ones so that you don't get that noise piece? It's something that wasn't confirmed or denied. They said, we can look into that. I just have one question to somebody from Markley about the diesel itself, because I think the topic has gone outside of the diesel piece and to many other issues. And when I listened to Michaela Handus-McCarthy, who is usually very level-headed through it, one of the major questions was meeting with the Sustainability Department in the city Lowell and making sure those plans were together. As Mass 350 had said the same thing, there's no back-and-forth talk in trying to do that. But I do have a question to somebody from Markley who can just answer a quick question about the type of diesel being used by those generators. Is it ultra-low sulfur diesel being used by each one of those generators?
Fernandez, Markley's director of design, yes, we use ultra-low sulfur diesel in all of our generators as a standard.
So I know we're probably talking foreign to a lot of people watching and listening in the audience, but what that does is it's a reduction, it's a substantial reduction in sulfur dioxide and particulate matters, emissions, which are known to cause respiratory problems and contribute to acid rain. Additionally, ultra-low sulfur diesel enables the use of advanced emission control technologies, further minimizing nitrogen oxides and other pollutants. So when I think about that, I think we're taking steps in the right direction now. When I feel Counsel Scott's frustrations because she's been dealing directly with everybody, and I don't know that she's getting a response from Markley that even is comparable, but we're hearing that they're going to do these things, they're going to take it, and it's maybe because they're here with four, but we all know that they'll be back with eight very shortly, and that's something that we all should be concerned about. I guess one question also to Markley would be, are we, have we looked into renewable energy to run these generators, and is that possible? If someone from Markley or Attorney Martin could answer that question.
For the emergency generators that we use on our site, the upcoming best available technology for those is, oh, sorry, the best available technology for updating those generators is a drop-in fuel replacement. It's called a hydro-treated vegetable oil. It's, like I said, a drop-in replacement for these generators. The problem with it at the moment is actually getting it. There is no pipeline for it. There's no supply chain available in this area. As I think I talked to the Sustainability Director, Catherine Moses, we have that in about two places in the country right now. It's a reliable source. It's in Texas and in Southern California, and mostly you see it overseas. As that supply chain increases and we get more available, like I said, it is a drop-in replacement for these generators, and we can run on that, and that is a renewable fuel.
So currently, there's no renewable fuel that you can use to run those?
No, not on those generators, no. The biodiesel mixes that are available are not certified for standby uses, use cases for these generators. Because they are used so infrequently, that fuel degrades over time and ends up needing to be fully replaced in those, so we would go through a lot more, which would require diesel trucks driving into the site and everything else that would come along with it, and a lot more interruption and run hours to keep that fuel from degrading.
You know, we heard tonight about the health risks in the neighborhood, and we've talked about trees and everything else in the neighborhood. It's a heat island over there, and there's no if, ands, or buts about it because we cut trees down and everything that would mitigate some of these issues that go on in these neighborhoods. One of the speakers talked about a drainage issue that's going on on Bourne Street. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, Manager Golden, are you aware of any talks between Markley and our wastewater department about drain issues in that neighborhood, specifically Bourne Street?
Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the counsel. Counsel, at this time, I was trying to get that information for you. I don't know if wastewater is answering my texts at this time, but I'll have to get back to you on that. I apologize.
So I have to take the word from Markley that they're saying that they're working on what the neighbors' issue was, and they're trying to get that situated over there, and I'm hoping that we can get that before the end of this discussion, which is probably going to take another two hours, but the noise at the roof level we talked about, runoff from water, I agree with the speaker who, that is extremely loud for 20 hours to be listening to that. I'm hoping Markley holds up their end of the bargain because the speaker has been fighting this for, since 2016, and it isn't fair. There's nobody in here, even all the people for Markley that would like to listen to that in their home for 20 hours, and nobody in here wants their child to get sick because of diesel generators and have asthma or long-term health problems with their grandparents or any of that. So these are real concerns from neighbors who live in the neighborhood. I understand we're for Markley and for Lowell, but we also have to be for people's health. And when I look at it, I just have a hard time either way looking at it. UMass Lowell, when Mary Burns comes up and gives a statement that it is a critical infrastructure for the Link project, we all want that. There's no doubt there, and I think that we all want UMass Lowell to be backed up by that. That's an important piece, so as we look forward, I'm hoping that Markley can work better with them, but just understand this, this vote tonight only gives them four. There's eight still in the pipeline. So if this stuff can't be worked out by the next time, I would hope this council would hold this group accountable to what they're saying they're going to do tonight. They're saying that they will work with the Sustainability Department. They're saying that they're going to build the walls up to cut down on the noise, and they're going to work with the neighbors. So that's my hope that comes out of this, and we start looking to renewables and working with the Sustainability Department. Thank you.
Counsel Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Gitcher pretty much summed up my thoughts as well. However, I thought it was very interesting to listen to that gentleman's phone, and I'm wondering if Attorney Martin or one of the Markley representatives can explain that noise, and the gentleman did say it went on for hours, so if I could have an explanation on that.
Yeah, so those are temp chillers. They're air-cooled chillers that were onsite. I'd have to investigate the date and time and how long they were running. I'm not aware of them running for 20 hours. Those are temporary. We are hoping to have them offsite by the end of July.
Offsite?
Offsite completely, yeah.
Okay. So we are talking about some conditions here, I guess, and like Counsel Gitcher just said that, you know, if you're going to work with the community there, that's fine. And once again, if it doesn't work out, you're going to be coming back here again, and obviously you'll have to face the consequences at that point, but you do have my vote tonight.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to start by thanking everyone for putting the time in to come down, not to this meeting, but every meeting that we've had about this issue and other issues concerning Markley. It's obviously a big impact on the neighbors. It's a big impact on the city from an economic point of view. This is a big deal in a lot of different ways, and so I appreciate that, and I think that people coming down and being willing to tell us their experiences and what's going on is really helpful and really informative for us as we try to move forward. I guess my first question is to the manager. We've heard things about the fire department, things about sound issues, building commission, et cetera. Not looking for a blow-by-blow, but can you give me an idea in terms of this property? Is it something we would consider a problem property in terms of violations of noise ordinances or building codes or safety or anything like that? Do we have any demonstrated pattern of issues coming from this building since they've opened?
Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the counsel. In speaking with Mr. Fuller and the folks over at DDS, the answer would be no to that at this time. I'm not saying that there probably wasn't a problem, wasn't an issue, but nothing that I would consider that DDS or the city has consistently written them up as we have other members of our community.
Okay. That's good to know, and I think that one thing I'd like to impart upon the neighbors is when you're having these issues, whether it's sound, whether it's fumes, whatever, please make sure that gets reported to the city. Please make sure that it's documented, so if it does become a pattern of behavior and a situation that needs to be addressed, the city has evidence it can point to, the EPA has evidence it can point to. You know, I understand your frustrations. I understand what you're dealing with, and as others have said, no one wants to listen to the noise that Jake played for us when he was up at the podium. No one wants that in their house. You know, we live in a city, there's all kinds of sounds, there's all kinds of loud noises and disturbances that happen probably at every one of our residences, some more than others. That's challenge of living in the city, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't try to improve it. So please make sure that that stuff gets reported, even if you just send me an email, I would appreciate it. We talked about renewable energy options, the vegetable oil. There's a hydrogen fuel cell idea that's unfortunately still years away. It's kind of on the horizon as the next option for backup power in a data center like this, but unfortunately, it's not ready for primetime. We've talked about other technologies here that we'd like to implement in the city and that might make things a greener, better future, but they just aren't ready for primetime yet. I would like to see Markley, over time, move towards more green energy. The reason I say that is, as many of you know, I'm an IT professional by trade. I spend a lot of time in data centers, looking at data centers, evaluating them, and there are companies out there, one that I use in my day job, who are committed to 100% green energy on a day-to-day basis. I can't tell you exactly what that means, but I can tell you that it's more than the 60% that was quoted to us tonight. So I would ask the Markley Group to please put yourself on a path to join your competitors as being 100% green energy. And now, that doesn't include the backups. I understand that. The company I'm speaking with, they have diesel generators. I've seen them onsite when I go do my site visits, when I go out to do work. They're very similar to the ones that are in South Lowell. We've talked about the data center being in a neighborhood. Some of the data centers I work with in my day job are in neighborhoods like this. There's one in upstate New York that my company uses pretty exclusively. I went out there a couple of years ago, and you literally drive down a residential road, come around a corner, and there's a building that looks like an office building, except it's a data center, similar to what we see in South Lowell. There are other data centers that we use that are in the middle of nowhere, in essence, so there are no neighbors on top of that, and that's probably a better solution for many reasons, but that's not the situation we find ourselves in. This is a building that's in an industrial zoned part of our city. It's been an industrial building for an extremely long time, and that use is not going to change. If Markley were to pack up and leave tomorrow... If Markley were to pack up and leave tomorrow, there would be another industrial use that would likely move into that building. I have no idea what it would be, no one does, but chances are, it would be loud, it would be smelly, there'd be a lot of traffic in and out. That's unfortunately the reality of living next to an industrial zone property. I would also like to reiterate that we're here tonight to talk about diesel storage on generators that are already installed and have been permitted by multiple levels of the city government, the state government. They're already there, they already exist. If we vote no in terms of storage, diesel storage in these generators, I don't know what happens. And maybe Mr. Solicitor might be able to clue me in here. If we voted no and didn't give them a permit to store this diesel in these generators, what happens? If the power goes out and they need these generators, like, do they just roll trucks in and fill them up with diesel, or how does that work?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not know the answer to that question. I wouldn't be able to answer that, but I guess, to put it more simply, you know, this is no different than any other permit or any type of license in a temporary fashion, such, not that it's temporary, but anything that is granted, as a permit would be. The authority lies, in this particular instance, with the city council. So, whatever decision is made, is made. And then, I have no way of predicting what would happen after the fact. If I were to speculate, I suspect that if that were to happen, my workload would probably get a little bit bigger.
Understood, understood. Thank you. And to address the scenario that's been painted towards us in terms of, you know, we started with X number of generators, and we continue to grow as we go down a path. Anybody who's even tangentially close to computing understands that things have gotten more powerful, things have gotten denser. So, you're requiring more power to be able to basically run the equipment that fits in a given space. You can fit more equipment, more transistors, more graphics cards, more servers and storage in a smaller footprint than you could 10 years ago when Markley opened. And that's why they need more generators. They still have the same amount of square feet, but they can put more stuff into those square feet. So, I understand the need, I understand the growth behind it, and I understand where this is going. I would like to see a condition on this permit that we require Markley to have regular, ongoing communication with our Sustainability Department, and I would like Markley, the next time they come back, to be able to tell us that they have a path to increasing the amount of green energy they're using beyond the 60 whatever percent it is today. Your competitors can do it, so I'd like to see you do that as well. And I know you're not going to be able to get there overnight. I know you're not going to be able to get there in two years, or four years, or five years, but I want to see a path. I think if we see a path to increasing green energy consumption at this site, it's going to go a long way to addressing some of the concerns that were delivered to us tonight. I also want to see you guys work with the neighborhood to be able to contain the sounds, the smells, the vibrations, the unpleasantness that comes with living next to an industrial The industrial property isn't going anywhere, as we mentioned, but there is work that can be done and should be done, and Markley has told us they are working on it to make life better for the neighbors. And I think that's going to be a continual process. So, right now, we're talking about the wall in front of the coolers, we're talking about the removal of the temporary coolers. Both will improve the abutters' experience. So, next time we're back and we're talking about the next round of generators, I would like to know what the next round of improvements is, what the next things that are going to be done to improve the lives of the neighbors. And I also want to know that the ones we talked about this time have been completed and have been successful. So, I will be asking those questions when we see you again. At this point, I am inclined to support this, because I understand all the needs behind it and what's going into it, but I won't support the next one if we don't see a path to improvement for everybody. So, I'm just letting you know that now. We got to keep the neighborhood happy, we got to build a plan to get more renewable energy, and we have to work together. This is an important piece of our economic development here in the city, and I want to see it continue to grow, but I want to see it do that in partnership with the neighborhood and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janes.
Sorry for the link.
By the time you're done talking, Mr. Martin, back here again for the other generators.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Can I suspend it, because it's the 10 o'clock?
Yeah, so, a motion to accept by Counselor Deco, seconded by Counselor Chow. A roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Move five.
What's that?
No, to take this vote for public hearing.
This is on.
On a public, yes, one vote.
What is the vote for, Mr. Mayor?
This is the vote for.
Mr. Mayor, what's the vote for?
The 10 o'clock rule.
Our 10 o'clock rule.
Okay.
We have items in front of us, we're not going to give.
I know, we're taking a vote on a public.
It's 5 past 10. I think we have to suspend the rules first.
Motion to adopt, Counselor Chow.
Hold on a second. Counselor Janes, you were saying something that might be relevant since we are on.
According to council rules.
We have to finish this first.
Correct.
Before we can make another motion to suspend the rules. Is that, Mr. Clerk, is that correct? Can we, do we have to finish this?
There's already a motion on the floor, there was a roll call, Counselor.
Okay.
Motion to adopt is by Counselor Deco, seconded by yourself. Counselor Deco.
Yes.
Counselor Gitchia.
Yes.
Counselor Janes.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
No.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Belanger.
Yes.
So, we could take a vote to extend the meeting up, but there are time-sensitive things that I can fly through in two seconds if you want to do that, and they could take a vote to extend, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say we take the vote, because it's past 10, to extend, and then.
So, if we do that, we have to go do the whole rest of the agenda, but we could just take these things here, which I can get done in 30 seconds, if you'll let me.
Make the motion, Mr. Mayor, and I'll second your motion.
To extend, seconded by Counselor Gitchia. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Vote.
Who was the second?
Counselor Gitchia.
Who was the first?
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Deco.
Yes.
Counselor Gitchia.
Yes.
Counselor Janes.
No.
What'd he say?
He said no.
No. Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
No.
Counselor Yem, yes.
Good night.
Counselor Yem.
It's two no's. It's on for next July.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Clerk.
Oh, two no's killed it.
We got to go to this.
Wow.